I've got my wrong glasses on. Hi, everyone, and welcome to the August 21st Select Board Meeting. It's now in session, and we have a packed agenda tonight, so I will try to stay on time. And towards that end, I brought just suggestions for us, so we remember how long we're talking. These are three-minute timers for the other side. And let's see if I can beat the sand. So with that, who would like to start us off with public comment?
If I could just say something?
Yes.
For those that are standing, there are chairs over there. Feel free to just walk around, get the chairs, set them where it's convenient, including behind here.
Thank you, Mr. Lo.
You're welcome. Sorry, Andy.
No problem. So, John, do you want to start us off with liaison reports?
Yeah, I have a really important one, actually. In my role as liaison to the DPW, I was invited to the hiring process, as you're all aware. Jeff Zager is going to be retiring shortly, September, I think, is that right, John? And so to that end, the process was begun during the summer of gathering applicants for the position. There was a lot of work done in advance internally by staff. I was invited to join in the interview process, which I did. I believe we took two, almost half-days last week to do that. And we actually had exceptional internal and external candidates, which is really, really good, in my opinion. And I will say this, that every one of them, you know, was highly gifted, which is, you know, rarely, when you're in the interview process, do you find that to happen. And after two days' worth of interviews and discussions among the members of the interview team, we probably should do a little bit, so you have some idea of the guidelines. I know Bob, you were...
I might be able to help from memory.
Yeah, you could do it from memory. I have it on file.
Rick Stinson was the, is the Wakefield DPW director and was very, very helpful, especially with the Redding-Wakefield relationship. Our HR director, of course, Judy Perkins. Gene Deliosh joined in part of the process. Greg Burns joined in the whole process. Joe Huggins, Facilities Director, joined in, as I did. And then two fellows from DPW, three were invited, one couldn't make it. Arthur Manenez is the DPW Union President, and Peter Isbell is the Watersewer Supervisor. So those comments were all very important. And I would say, from my perspective, the three DPW people in the room, two from White Hill, one from Wakefield, had the largest say, as they showed.
Yeah, and we really kind of designed, you know, in advance, the interview process to reflect that.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the most important questions are going to be asked by those people who actually work inside of that department. I can tell you that among a group of, a total of five exceptional candidates, one literally distinguished herself among, from the pack. And I'd like to introduce Jane Casella, who's our new DPW.
Excellent. All right. Jane said yes, which is...
Lock the door. Stand up, Jane, and we can welcome and thank you for accepting the position.
That's what I wanted to say.
We came straight now.
Yeah, yeah. And easiest job in the world, I'm sure, in the summertime.
Jane did an exceptional job in the interview process, and that was no surprise to me, and really distinguished herself among a very strong field. And I know she'll continue to do that as she elevates to the next level. Now, you got a, you know, first job, you got to replace yourself. So, you know, that'll be, you know, that'll be, you know, something that she'll be looking forward to. Couple of other pieces of business that I did not see on the agenda, that I, I'm going to take this opportunity to bring up. One of them, as you're all aware, there was a open meeting law complaint that I actually filed against the board. And I wanted to just report to all of you kind of where I stand on that. I received a letter from, from the board, even though, as you all know, I was asked to stand away, which I retrospectively thinking, not sure that was the best idea, but it's the one that I followed, it was the advice of council, and did so. Frankly, the letter that I received had a, was an explanation of Ray's findings. I think, I just want to, there's a couple of things that I wanted to say. One is that I believe that Ray's findings were probably somewhat out of context from what actually happened. Just a personal opinion, that's my observation of what happened. I understand he came to a conclusion based on a set of facts that he had. I think there was absent facts, but that being said, I'm very respectful of Ray's work, and I understand how he came to that conclusion. I also received a letter from the Attorney General outlining their analysis of both Ray's response and laying out options for me to go forward, should I choose to do that. I will tell you this, that the letter I received in paragraph two, I'm sure you all got a copy of the letter, is that letter?
This is Ray's letter?
Ray's letter?
This is Ray's letter, yeah.
Yeah, it's actually from the board, you know, in...
So, I just have to ask you, John, are you speaking as the complainant, who was a private citizen, or a member of the board?
I think that it's very hard, difficult to separate those two, but I am speaking my reaction, because I recused myself as a member of the board. So I would probably best characterize what I'm saying right now, not as a member of the board, but as a citizen, but this, you know, it's kind of a blurry area, so bear with me for just a second.
The only thing I'm concerned about is that I, you know, we sent our response to the state, and that's our legal defense.
And that's fine. I mean, what I'm going to say is not requiring a response. I get your defense.
I understand. I just am, again, reluctant to discuss the issue, because we, as a board, have closed it, and so I'd like us to...
This is not a discussion, this is a statement. This is a statement of town business, that I think, having dutifully recused myself, as the Town Council asked me to do, I just want to make a brief statement.
So you're unrecusing yourself?
I'm reacting to what I've received. The letter that I received had a paragraph in it, paragraph two, which really solved the problem for me, okay? All I asked was, A, that we recognize that this was probably not the best thing for us to do. Whether or not it was an open meeting violation, it seemed to me that it was, but that doesn't matter, what it seemed to me. It seemed, actually, based on my watching of what Town Council said the last time, dangerous territory, probably something we should avoid. That paragraph two indicated that that would be something we should avoid in the future, A, and B, that generally speaking, you know, several of the members felt that it was probably not the most appropriate thing to do, won't have it happen again, go forward. That was really the only thing I was looking for, and so I want to say to all of you, I appreciate the time you put in to reviewing this. Requirement to agree 100% with everything that comes out is not necessary. Being respectful of the opinions is what is what's required, in my opinion. And so I'm, in a very respectful way, accepting that opinion and letting you know that it is not, I have already written to the Attorney General's office explaining that I have no interest in going forward. I think it's important for us to move on with the town business.
I agree.
So, that was one missing item from the agenda. The other...
Well, actually, I was going to bring it up, but you just...
Well, you know, I mean...
It's okay, it's okay.
It had to be said, I saw, I didn't see it there.
Yeah.
So, this is a time that, you know, selectmen don't always make, only make liaison reports, they're also open for commentary on pending town business.
Absolutely, yes.
The last piece of that, that I want to comment on, is that we have an outstanding collection of minutes from an executive session. There's been much acrimony about what was stated in that executive session. And, you know, it's my opinion that we need to, in, with all due haste, move forward to executive session. That is not scheduled for tonight. I would ask that we agree to move to executive session as early as possible, so that we can look at the minutes, so that those minutes can be thoroughly vetted by us and exposed to the general public. Because, in my opinion, there's been a characterization that one thing happened compared with what I think the minutes are going to reflect. So, that being said, I'm going to say to you that I urge this board to meet an executive session at its earliest possible opportunity...
I understand.
...to approve a set of minutes that can be released to the public.
Thank you, thank you, John. Vanessa?
Sure. So I actually went, Barry and I had a subcommittee meeting for Communications Policy and Review. He'll go into more of that in a moment. I also went to the Lincoln Prescott Residential Meeting this morning, and so just a few updates there, for those who might be interested that are from the neighborhood. The foundation work is being done now, and above-ground work will be approximately October to December. They're going to move indoors come January. They're going to work on improving signage for pedestrian walkways, since some of them have been impeded due to construction. And I'm going to remind the crews not to litter, there has been some concern about littering and rodent problems, so that should help address that. They also agreed to post updates to the website, which is construction@35lincolnst.com, to help keep the neighbors better informed. And the other item is, this board had reviewed the Housing Bill 4290, which we had had some concerns about as far as their changes to zoning. I just wanted to report back, that failed to pass in either chamber, so they're going back to the drawing board on that. Thanks.
All right, thanks, thanks, Vanessa. So Barry?
Okay, just a few things. I didn't see any folks there, but it was a long day, but I did attend the Jams for Jake concert a couple of Sundays ago down at Simon's Field.
Did it rain?
No, it was...
It cleared up.
It cleared up. They canceled the Saturday, and they did Sunday, then it went from rain to 95 degrees. So, I have to just, I can't say enough about those young people who organized this in memory of their friend, and not just their friend, but really kind of putting forward a positive message and working with lots of other groups to really put the opioid crisis at the forefront. These are young people, and they put together a tremendous, a tremendous show, a lot of talent out there. It's, Jams for Jake, you can find it, you can make a donation. They raised a lot of money, they can use a lot more. Also, and then, as part of that, I know folks maybe have heard, on a related note, that Erica McNamara from, who used to run RACSA for 10 years, has resigned, and I, to take on a job at UMass Lowell. She was really the heart and soul of RACSA, really starting it. John, you probably worked with her more than anybody here, and I just, I just wanted to wish her well. She's going to be, I think, the head of Student Mental Health Services at UMass Lowell, which is really a nice segue into the work that she's done. And again, just, you know, big shoes to fill, but really, RACSA is RACSA because of Erica, and I really wanted just to give her a shout-out, and the props that she deserves.
You know, Barry, I think we should probably take it one step further. You know, it seems to me that we should...
John, I'm sorry, just let Barry finish. I'm asking people to respect the floor when others have the floor.
I think I knew you were going to go with this, and maybe do so in a more formal proclamation with that.
Yes.
I think, I think that's a great, I want you, we can get her back in here to honor her more appropriately, so. So I attended the CPDC meeting on Monday, last Monday. They didn't really take up, a lot of things that got kind of postponed, but there were a couple of things of interest that I wanted to share with the board. One, one was sort of on kind of design guidelines and standards for projects in the 40R. I mean, we did the 40R overlay, and, you know, unbeknownst to us, we got like bombarded with project, which was great, but, you know, and sort of each project kind of, the board sort of looked at, and now they're sort of want to take a look at sort of the whole district as a whole. And Jean and her staff have put together some guidelines, and the board and the CPDC looked at that, just sort of about what the expectations are in terms of how the buildings relate to the rest of the district and to each other, and design guidelines, and there's some really good stuff in there. They also looked at kind of whether or not it made sense to sort of relook at, at the master plan. You know, we had talked about that a little bit here. Their feeling is, is that rather than sort of undertake a long process and dealing with lots of expensive consultants, their druthers are rather to kind of take a look at pieces of it and kind of fix as needed. I don't think there's any formal vote of discussion on it, but that's sort of where their feeling is, and obviously that they'd be the ones who are going to be the ones who kind of implement that. They didn't really have an appetite to kind of take on the master plan at this point. Just, Joe, I have a little friend here. Go play with Dan. So, we're going to have a proclamation later for some Eagle Scouts, but there was also an event that Dan and John Halsey and I attended. It was Eagle Scout candidate Kevin Yatshashi. His Eagle Scout project was to actually design and construct a permanent flagpole at the entrance of the library, and that was dedicated on Friday. He did a tremendous job, and now as you drive by on Middlesex, you will see the flag, the United States Flag and Massachusetts Flag, 24 hours and lit at night. So, great job and a wonderful effort by Kevin. And then, lastly, Dan and I, as part of our subcommittee on looking at the Town Manager's contract, as you know, Town Manager's, and the last year of his contract, we met and discussed sort of the salary and benefit survey that we've sort of been putting together with some of the, you know, peer communities and some other towns, and starting that process. Obviously, as part of the process, I want to use this as a reminder that Town Manager evaluations are due, Dan.
Next Monday.
Next Monday.
It's a firm deadline, guys.
Firm, at 10:00, you said, right?
Right.
So, and that's all part of, obviously, looking at Bob's contract again, is doing the evaluation, and I think it goes to, do they go to Judy?
Judy or Macronellis.
Or Macronellis.
To both, probably.
Yeah, but obviously not Bob and not any of us.
Yeah, there's a nice instructional email that Bob wrote up, so.
And that's all I have? Thanks, Barry.
Thanks, Barry. Dan?
Vanessa and I attended the Recreation Committee, first time as liaisons. A number of topics were discussed. The one I wanted to specifically focus on was the fact that Friends of Redding Baseball have donated a turtle batting cage. That's not a batting cage for turtles, but rather a batting cage that resembles a turtle. So it's covered on the top and on the sides. It can fold up, it can be stored away, the, it has a soft exterior that can be taken off in the winter, and the aluminum casing can be folded up, put in a safe place. So, I think that's coming before us on the 11th for approval, since any gifts have to be approved by us. Cable TV negotiations are continuing with Comcast. We've had one meeting with the Comcast rep. We brought issues of concern to them, they're taking them back under advisement, and we'll be meeting again on Wednesday. So that's a staff-only meeting. And the, as Barry said, and I can't emphasize it enough, Town Energy Review inputs are due next Monday at 10:00 a.m., please.
Thanks, Dan. I just have a few things to say. Introducing timers to help us be, keep moving things along, I'm not trying to silence people, but just so we're aware, three minutes is actually a long period of time to talk. I wanted to announce, as John referred to, our response to the open meeting law complaint has been sent by our Town Council, and that matter is closed unless we hear otherwise from the state. Also, an important announcement, we have an opening on the Bylaw Committee for a full member, and it's only a five-person...
Five-person, yep.
So when they're down to four, you can have trouble reaching core. So, please tell your friends, encourage people to apply to the position. I, I'm their liaison, and I promised that I would try to get the position filled soon. Of course, it'll start with the VASC.
Actually, that goes to a separate appointing committee, you're a quarter of that committee with the moderator and the chair.
Yes, I have one Wednesday night, so I apologize.
And they do not get associate, I don't think.
Right, right. I made that mistake. Lastly, the, I just wanted to remind the board and the public and, and town staff, Barry sent out after, while he was acting chair, he had this discussion about wanting to represent the neighborhoods where these projects, these new developments are going up. Because obviously, it has a big impact on those neighbors. So, to remind everyone, John was assigned to the Post Office Project, Vanessa to the 24 Gold Street, Gould Street Project, I've been assigned to the Lincoln Street process or project, I apologize, Dan, Woburn Street...
Yep.
Barry, Sunoco, and Lakeview. You kindly assigned yourself to two, which is very nice.
Sparing the rest of you.
Yeah, so please come to us, the liaison, if you have questions, and we'll try to open up some good communication between the developers and the neighbors, Select Board, and involve town staff as appropriate. And that's all I have, so I will...
I have just another question. The rodent issue, is that going to be discussed?
Yeah, the, there is a, you've all heard of the rodents. Bob will make a presentation on that. I looked up some, some information from the CDC and other places that I can share, share with the community, and then I'm sure the Board of Health, you know, Dan will be aware of that.
Yep.
The Board of Health will be looking into that in the future. So, now it's time for public comment, except for the rodent issue, which is a quick concern, you know, is obviously a sort of immediate concern. I'm going to limit public comment to this, to right now, so that we can get our work done for the evening. And I just remind you that to address me and to state your name, address, and keep it within two minutes. We have a lot of people, a lot of people who want to speak, so, you know, I'd just like to be moving on.
Two or three?
Two. The three-minute timer is for the select people.
Oh. You've got to be special timing, huh?
Get that extra minute. Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Breaker's turn.
It is.
Please, remember the Attorney Board Trustees. We still need one more member. We have one, Frankie Driscoll's daughter has suggested she'd like to come on, and when she gets to Children's School, she'll be done. But we still need one more person. It's not an exciting board, we have a lot, and make sure that everybody gets buried.
At the right place. Thank you.
The Board of Health would not allow us to do otherwise.
Sure. Speaking of openings, Barry and Vanessa, you are the VASC now, correct? Actually, I don't think we ever really decided...
I don't think you decided that.
Neither did...
Actually, technically, it's still me and Dan. We haven't...
Oh, so we've done that? I think your motion was that Vanessa would replace one of you, but I'm not sure it was clear.
I don't think we ever designated...
She replaced me.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So...
Thanks for your service.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, we probably should, so...
Did we, did we, though?
We might have, I thought we already...
We should do it.
But let's just do it. So would someone like to propose a motion?
We're doing that now, before public comment's over?
Yeah, let's just get it, get it done while we're on the topic.
So I officially stepped down, so now there's a moment.
Okay, so, can someone make a motion?
Motion to assign Dan Ensminger and Vanessa Alvarado to the Volunteer Appointment Subcommittee.
Through the June 30th?
Through June 30th, 2019.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? So 5-0. Now to public comment. And thank you to the first one.
You've got to look at the crowd.
In the second row, then the first row, and we'll go from there.
Hi, good evening, Cadence Thompson's Arlington Street. I have brief remarks updating the Select Board on the Lincoln Prescott Development Interactions with Community. Vanessa gave you a little bit of an update in her remarks earlier. Today, August 21st, the developer and construction team held a meeting and spoke speakers for the community regarding the residential development at Lincoln and Prescott Streets. This was the second meeting of its kind, the first being on April 2nd. In the April meeting, there was discussion of having monthly or bimonthly meetings, and today, four and a half months later, we are having our first follow-up to that agreement. We made progress with the construction team, who at both the April meeting and today's meeting have been interested and willing to communicate and work with neighbors. The largest issues at present are pertaining to safety for both drivers and pedestrians at and around both Lincoln and Prescott Street sides, sightlines at the corner, and adequate signage of road markings, as Vanessa said earlier. While the construction company has been willing, open to improvements and conversation, we continue to have some difficulty finding agreeable terms with the developer. The meeting was well-attended, given that we only had two workday notice, the meeting time of 10:00 a.m. on a weekday, and only the most basic outreach done by an email list that was created by the construction company at the April 2nd meeting. There were about 10 to 12 neighbors and residents in attendance, and Select Board Member Vanessa Alvarado was also there, which was very helpful in terms of setting and adhering to appropriate roles and making at least some attempts to hold the developer to account. Matters that remain are in need of care are that we do not have, we do not have town representation at the meeting. Having planning, staff, and traffic and safety representation in the room will help the community, construction team, and developer to use the meeting time efficiently and effectively. Without traffic and safety, for instance, the developer is making claims that cannot be verified and negotiated at the time. There was an original traffic and safety plan in place and negotiated between the town and the developer, but not with community input, and that plan is apparently changing over time, as some of the boundaries have moved closer into the street, et cetera. And the community has on-the-ground concerns and feedback, which could really positively inform decision-making and agreements between the town and developer.
I have to, I'm going to have to let you wrap it up.
I've got another paragraph. The meeting location... I've got another paragraph. The meeting location and time, three sentences. Meeting location and time of day are problematic as well, as there is a need to have meetings at a time when community members can attend. And matters of advanced planning and notice of these community meetings, who plans the meetings and expectations that municipal staff participate, how the meeting information is shared across the community, both before and during the meeting and after the meeting can be a concern. The only other matter at hand is water lines have been established into the site, gas lines have not. Establishing gas line connections on the site may constitute new lines, and I know that's been an issue before the board, so I'm just letting you know if there are not gas lines.
Thank you, thank you. I, you know, I'm, I'm it on that, so I will reach out to the developer.
Eileen Letario, and I live on Deppard Drive. Recently, I reviewed the board meetings on RCTV, and I want to thank the experienced members for their honesty when making difficult decisions like electing a new chair. But at the very end of that discussion, before the last tiebreaker vote, I was very disturbed to hear a member who at that point was not being asked to critique the merits of the two names in play, but suddenly used inflammatory rhetoric to publicly discredit, discredit one of them, a highly respected member with over 29 years serving Redding children and families. Later, in July, I did find it hypocritical. Same member assumed the role of the board's moral authority, threatening and preaching civility after having been publicly uncivil toward a fellow board member. And I feel this should end. Secondly, I also want to call attention to an issue that I feel needs clear guidelines to prevent what occurred on April 2nd, the night before the townwide election. Having an advantage being a Barrows parent, one candidate accessed the school's parent email list and sent an email blast to the school community, soliciting votes and promoting a political agenda. Many Barrows parents and voters contacted me to point out that they felt it was unfair, unethical, and a disservice to the opponent. When schools accept parent emails, I know firsthand, parents expect trust, and their email contacts will be used for school-related initiatives, not for political gain. Transparency was a foundational element in the last campaign, so I feel instead of preaching transparency, it should be practiced by all board members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Doc Neary. I reside on Village Street. Lifelong resident of town, and obviously my family and friends are also in town. I'm asking you tonight to support the moratorium on doing in replacement gas main projects. I've worked in National Grid for 35 years, dating back to the Boston Gas here. I'd say this is dangerous work to perform. Can take years of working side by side with seasoned veterans to learn the shot, to pass along that knowledge to the next person. There is no replacement for experiencing with that kind of gas. The work being done on our streets right now is not in the interest of public safety, and certainly not in the interest of citizens of the town of Redding. The replacement work as the National Grid has set out on the streets, frankly, don't know what they're doing. They were banned from training before they got set out on Fox and the Cross. The union is here tonight. They're asking for a moratorium, not unlike what happened during the postseason in the winter, on non-emergency work. Urgencies are something, obviously, entirely different. And it is something that needs to be done. What we were asking for is more, more moratorium on work that can be put on until trained professionals who do it every day, second nature, are back in the field, making sure the work is done correctly and safely. Certainly not asking the town to become involved in any manner, shape, or form of labor. Some of the 20 other cities and towns have taken this down. And I think it's to protect the residents, and I think it's necessary that the board just stop using this.
Thank you. You know that the board will be taking this on later in the evening.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
In the back.
Angela Vindit, 10 Orchard Park Drive. I have to agree with Ms. Letario that transparency from our board is extremely important. I sent a letter several weeks, a week ago. I spoke at the last select meeting about an incident which I think is very important. I hope that the questions that I asked about board of selectmen's roles in providing information adequately, I hope the questions that I asked in my letter are answered to Ms. Letario's point of complete transparency by the board.
Thank you. In the back.
My name is Steve Obravlos from Glendale, LA, and I'd like to support the moratorium on the, on the gas. Has to do with public safety, bringing guys in, managers and supervisors to work out in the street and not to disrupt every day. It's very important that, I just want to support these guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? And then, and then over there.
Mr. Dugan, my name is Darren Farquhar. I live on 457 Franklin Street. It's my first time I've been to this kind of meeting, and I'd just like to express that I'm baffled and dismayed about your demeanor towards Mr. Halsey. Several times already tonight, he's tried to speak, you've cut him off, you've been rude to him, but I've noticed anytime anyone else wants to speak, you're very gracious and kind, gentle and generous. And I just don't think that's right.
Thank you. In the back.
Hi, my name is John Zarnoda, 62 Lothbroe. I'm actually a neighbor of Mr. Lala's share. I've been working for National Grid for over 16 years now, and I agree with the other fellow gas workers that this is a serious issue coming forward, especially with new projects like Prescott and Lincoln. I was a technician that actually did the last gas work there. There's quite a bit of gas work to be done. You have the train station there, you have the general public, you know, frequenting that area very, very much. The people that are out there, sir, at the, at the moment, are not trained, not nearly, like the National Grid people that are usually on staff. That's something you should be very aware about. With gas, there's no second chance. And, you know, property people, that's our main concern, and we have a great record doing it. Honestly, you don't know who you're gonna get if you may call in a gas leak, let's say tomorrow. It could be a technician that was trained temporarily for two weeks. It could be a manager that has not been out in the field for 15 years. So that's a big concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Bob, town manager's report.
I'd like to say that anytime I smell gas, it seems like Mr. Zarnoda's already on gas. Last, we last met at Haven Street.
Does he get two minutes too?
I won't take two minutes. Every item was covered with the exception of the rodent issue. And I, I had a letter from the health agent today. I have a list, and I also have some contact information. I'm not going to read the whole letter to you, but please understand the health agent and the Board of Health indirectly is well aware of these issues. They have contacted the board and myself with a summary and a list of rules.
And me.
And Dan is liaison. There is also a spreadsheet being tracked of every complaint, and you can see there's not very many. And I'm going to finish my remarks rather quickly, and we're happy to put this on the website if people would find it helpful. But I want to focus my remarks on this page. I went home today to lunch, and my wife said, hey, there's rats in the neighborhood. I said, how do you know that? She said, because I read it on the parents' Facebook page. Let me suggest that if your neighbor's house is on fire, you shouldn't post it on the neighbor's Facebook page until after you call the fire department. So there have only been eight calls in the town hall so far on this, and there's way more posts. There's a map on Facebook that shows all the locations. It's much bigger than our map. It's a very serious issue. I don't mean to make light of it, but the general public has to understand, if you want your town government to do something about it, you need to tell us. And having other residents complain that they're, they're hearing things, their neighbor might have heard something, is understandable, but it's not helpful in us solving the problem. We need to know facts. The health agent, the Board of Health, needs to know exact things. And she has received, as you saw, a list. She has visited every location that has reported it, and has one o'clock today, and I didn't see her since. She's probably out doing the work. I've contacted the head of the MWRA because it was some suggestion that, you know, some of their work had something to do with it. And he said, can you please provide me a list of streets and I'll look into it? And I have, and I hadn't heard back before this meeting started. So I just want to urge people to please contact the town. And I've listed two email addresses. Either one is fine, two is usually better. One is theselectboard@ci.redding MA.us. It's on the website if you go to the select boards page. And the other is townmanager@ci.redding MA.
And Bob, you're copied automatically on the first thing.
And I am copied on the select board, but if people want to make sure they get my attention to places is good. As yet, the Board of Health does not have a generic email address. We'll look into that. That's why I think these are the best email addresses between all of us in this room. One of us is bound to, you know, make contact with the right person internally. And again, I do understand the attraction of social media and the ability to like and dislike comments and pile on. But for those that are only using social media, you're not helping solve the problem. So I urge you to please contact us with firsthand information.
Bob, let me, I just wanted to add on, on to that. Emphasize, please contact the town so that the Board of Health can address the issue and know the severity of the issue. I, there are some, there's a lot out on the web about rats that is not necessarily true. I've, I have been visited by a plague of rats myself some years back and watched, watched my cornstalks get eaten by a rat during the daytime, climbing up, they didn't leave me a kernel. What's really upsetting and is when I read the emails of people whose, the inside of their houses have been severely damaged by rats. And that's, that, and then the disease issue is somewhat of a risk. I have information from the CDC, NIH, on diseases that can be carried by rats. Not trying to alarm anyone, but, but I can send that to Dan as the liaison to the Board of Health. They are good sources of information and accurate. Please, you know, until, you know, to help the town get this under control, it's very hard to trap you, trap your way out of a rat infestation. They breed just very rapidly, and they're also very smart. So they will learn that a snap trap is not a good thing to go near. So try to remove any food sources that they may have access to, bird feeders, things in the house or outside the house that are food for dogs, grass seed is another big one. I learned that one personally. And any other source of food, try to secure it so a rat can't get in there. And then there is also, if rats are poisoned, I heard a rumor that the town was poisoning rats. We are not, to my knowledge, poisoning rats, but individuals can, can poison rats if they have a problem with them. And the, the risk to a dog, for example, eating one rat is relatively low. But if they eat many rats, the risk goes up. So, and there's a, I have a link on that as well. It's from the state of Oregon.
If I, if I might, Andy, two sources of food for rats that I wouldn't have thought about, that I've learned about this week are pet waste. And Washington Park in particular has been cited as a place where some dog walkers get together, let the dogs off the leash, and off they go. It's really important that you pick up after your pet. And then the other source is actually folks that compost in. People don't think about the fact that compost for a rat is like all the rest of them. So those are two things that might not be obvious sources that you should really be careful in. I have to say, from the interactions I've heard about and read about so far, generally, our residents are doing a good job. One resident even went out of the way to say, well, the health agent said it's probably over there in your neighbor's yard. You see all this? And she said, and do you want us to contact the neighbor? Oh, no. My landscaper will go fix that for her. So it's nice to hear neighbors helping neighbors. But again, the town can't fix something unless it hears the right information.
And secure any, try to find out where they're getting your house and fix it. It's hard, but, but. So, anything else on that topic?
No, not, and I'm done with my report. Everything else got covered.
Any, any questions in the audience about the rodent issue? Because I.
I have a question, Bob.
Yes.
So, Bob, all cities and towns have rodent issues. I deal with a lot of chipmunks personally. My kids love them. Foundation, not so much. If, if it is a problem that has become more severe, let's say, recently, what actions could the town take to help remediate?
The actions by the town are actually very limited. It's private property. Our advice from our health agent first and foremost is to hire a professional. Some residents will do that, some residents won't. I will say that if it's in an area, residents should get together to hire a professional, because I've heard stories from some of my neighbors that they've done that in the past, and economically, it's a much better deal. So it really has to rise to a pretty significant crisis before the town has the lawful authority to enter private property and do something about it. Another sort of source that can be missed is we have a vacant property bylaw, but we don't have a bylaw that says you've got to mow your lawn.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you, if one of your neighbors has a lawn that's one foot high, that's a place where rats might want to go. So neighbors just have to help police each other. Town, again, by law, can suggest to people that we can't enforce until it becomes a real serious issue.
Anyone else on the rodent situation? Yes.
You mentioned that bird feeders.
Yes, they, the birds get at the food and then it drops, it drops. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that if you have a bird feeder and seeds drop, that is a good food source for rats.
We had a sundown for the, for the whole.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I wish it were otherwise. In the wintertime, I watched a rat crawl out in the snow with about four or five offspring behind her, go to the feeder, collect a bunch of stuff, and then, sorry for the visual.
I know in winter, when the current pandemic, but I did put a pumpkin out at Halloween.
Yeah.
Stayed there too long, and I said, that is not a chipmunk. You know, and it was just like.
Right, yeah. Chipmunks will not mind visiting your home either. And we have a plethora of chipmunks and rabbits, and just not enough red-tailed hawks and coyotes.
Yeah, I wanted you my coyote as a.
Okay, fine. I mean, we have coyotes. They're just not coming to my neighborhood.
We do.
Or enough. All right. Yeah. Bob, I, as I, as I mentioned to you earlier, I just wanted to give an update on the hiring of a new economic developer, development, sorry. Economic development director.
The update since Barry reviewed this, I'm going to say in July. I'm not positive which meeting. I since have met with two other communities town managers and discussed our priorities and our plan going forward. And the clear priority for all of us was Redding to hire a new DPW director, which has just been completed this.
Yep.
So now we're set for a second meeting with the DPW directors of other communities and myself, and we'll plot a course forward. Given the primaries in early September, we wanted to stay away from the legislators until after then, but we pulled an intent to do that and to involve probably one member of the board for each community. We're still discussing that.
Okay.
So, and that's, that's sort of discussing the project. And then that will help us shape who we hire as an economic development director. As I think Barry reported to you in July, we went through a round where we just didn't find any satisfactory candidates after doing a lot of work for them. So we wanted to try again.
Barry, did you have, oh, sorry.
No.
Did you have anything to add, Barry?
No, I mean, I just think, as I reported last time, the job, the candidates we got just didn't fit the role of what we thought we needed. And given the fact that the DPW garage is probably the, you know, the big elephant in the room, we should probably have a DPW director before we sort of figure. in the room, we should probably have a DPW director before we sort of figure out the next steps. Now that we have one, we can, we can kind of reformulate that and get back with our other towns. So that's basically what Bob said.
Okay, thanks, Bob. And one more, one more thing. The override, which passed, I want to, I was wondering if we could get a brief, brief update from you at our next meeting on the status of the override spending. I know that it's not like you get the money and then you can spend it all at once. I understand the challenges.
Actually, I haven't got the money yet, just to be clear.
Okay.
I can update you on all the positions and where we stand.
Exactly. Who's been hired, who hasn't been hired, and hopefully there will be surplus, not surplus, but it's going to go, it will go into next year and our plans for that.
Yeah, I can update you briefly that hiring in the fire department is slow, and that's civil service related hiring. The police department was faster than I expected, and everything else, our reports use case by case.
Okay, and I understand the school committee has their, their piece of it, too. That would be great, because I want to keep that in the eye of the public.
That's a good suggestion.
So they know how we're being, how we're spending our money. And I know it's going to be discussed at the financial forum in October, but it'd be, not everyone has the stamina for those meetings.
Yeah, I'll do that at your next meeting.
Okay. Any other questions for Bob?
No.
Okay, thank you. So our next agenda item, oh, thank you, Barry. I'm going to sort of interrupt the flow of the meeting right now, because I hear that we have some guests in the room, and Barry will take it from here.
So this past Saturday, I had the honor, and it just seems like every couple of months we get the call that we have more Eagle Scouts who are taking the Court of Honor. And this Saturday, I attended the ceremony for three. Ben Corre, who I see here, Corey Ward, and Ryan Monahan got their Eagle Scout awards. Terrific, I mean, just terrific gentlemen, and they worked on some terrific projects, really leaving a legacy of good work here. All three are heading out to school, which is why I think only Ben could make it today. And it was sort of a late notice, but I wanted to get these things done and acknowledged sort of before you guys head off. And also, we have a full, a full house here to really honor the work that you do. And I know, John, you're a big supporter of scouts, and, you know, it's just incredible, the two packs that we have in here that really give of themselves, and just, and the families, excuse me, while we sign all these. So I'm actually going to read them. Soon as Andy signs it.
He started with us.
Okay, so we have three, and actually, one is here. Ben, do you want to stand up? So this is actually a really good segue, because Ben's project was to build a safety fence and shield to keep animals away from the dumpster at St. Anthony's. So those people up on Havel Street, you know, those rats are going to go out of the west side. So do the good work of Ben. And so he kind of felt funny, because it's sort of like, you know, it's sort of like, oh, I built a fence around a dumpster. You know, what's my legacy? So because his name is Corre, we're going to call it the Corre Corral.
Excellent.
But in recognition of his achieving the Eagle Scout Award for his leadership project in which he built a safety fence around the dumpster at St. Anthony's Church on Havel Street for sanitation purposes and protection from animals to keep it sanitary, given on this 21st day of August 2018 by the Redding Board of Selectmen.
Excellent.
So, second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, any discussion?
You're the courier. All right, so, the second one is for Ryan Monahan. In recognition of his achieving the Eagle Scout Award for his leadership project in which he built 16 community garden beds at First Baptist Church in Woburn Street, and these garden beds will allow people to grow their own food. So we did this ceremony, actually, in Old South, which around the corner, as we know, houses the Redding Food Pantry. But the work that Ryan did actually gives people the chance to grow their own food. And as we know, there's nothing more sacred than, you know, the right to have people good food to eat. So Ryan did a tremendous job in allowing people now, whoever they want to, can go and use that to grow their own food. So congratulations.
Second on that? Yes, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
And the last one is to Corey Ward. In recognition of his achieving the Eagle Scout Award for his leadership project in which he built a message center at the dog walking park near the Grove Street entrance of the compost center. The message center has all the trails for the town forests posted and with all the rules and the regulations. So I think this is now the second or third project that an Eagle Scout has undertaken in the town forests. So obviously, you know, besides just sort of the conservation and the beautification and just sort of keeping the land pristine, I mentioned to Corey and the folks there that it's also an economic development issue, because, you know, we're competing with some of our other towns for sort of people to move in and invest. And there's a town to our east that sort of, they keep talking about this thing they have called, I think it's a lake, I don't know, some kind of lake. So, you know, they keep talking about that, but we have a town forest, so that's something that we ought to be proud of. So Corey and a number of other Eagle Scouts have done some really good work in the town forest, keeping that safe and pristine. So, second for Corey?
Second. All in favor?
Thank you, Barry.
All right. So just so, Corey's going to be going to the University of Maine, Ryan is going to, I think, UMass Worcester, and Ben, you're going to Loyola Merrill.
Yep.
And so, safe travels to all the boys, and thank you for all you do here.
Thanks a lot, Barry, for doing that. It's, we're all grateful for it. I know, John, you've been involved in the Boy Scouts for a while.
For 60 years, though.
For a while. I didn't want to bring in years. And I know you recently went to a convention. So if you wanted to add anything to Barry's comments, or what scouts do for us in general?
Well, you know, thank you, the timer, I would blow the timer up if I started talking about what I think about scouting and what it does for young people. The developmental issues, obviously, for Eagle Scouts is, you know that it's a, it's a mountaintop experience to actually finally finish. Welcome to the fraternity, my friend. I will say this, that it's more than being an Eagle Scout, though. It's the kind of the fellowship and the development and the training that goes on. Not everybody becomes an Eagle Scout.
You're right.
The Eagle Scouts tend to bring all their, you know, their brothers along, now brothers and sisters along. And we are fortunate here in Redding to have two Boy Scout troops still standing, which is, you know, this was, this was a town that had eight Boy Scout troops at one time. And two survive and thrive. Those two troops develop more Eagle Scouts, and I can tell you this from my own personal experience, having been the president of the Greater Boston Area Board of Directors of the Boy Scouts, 56 communities and towns all produce Eagle Scouts because they all have Boy Scout troops. Redding has now, for over 10 years, produced more Eagle Scouts per year than any one of those other communities. That includes Boston, and, you know, a lot of places a lot bigger than we are here. So you're part of the Eagles Nest, we call it here in Redding, and I want to congratulate you for that. It's okay to be a Boy Scout in Redding, which is kind of cool. So, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, yeah. So, next up, and before we get into the discussion and action items, I just wanted to make it clear that I'm not trying to step on people's toes or interrupt people, but I, two things. I did have, when you started, when John started talking about the open media law response, I have to worry about, that's our, that's the town's defense. It turned out to be fine, but that's why I expressed my concern. Other than that, I've also noticed, and I gather it's well-publicized on local Facebook pages, that we are known somewhat as a board of hither, whither, and bicker. So, that's, I think we all need, you know, we all recognize that needs to stop. On the new chair, this is my third meeting, and I'm going to be, run the meetings a little in more of an organized fashion, ask people to wait to be recognized by the chair before they speak, because I think oftentimes when we interrupt, then toes get stepped on and we sort of lose track of discussion. And also to, to stay on point, on topic. So, so that's what I'm trying to do. So the next item for discussion are liaison assignments roles and responsibility. And this originally cropped up, although, you know, I know there have been other cases when, you know, boards and, or liaisons, I'm sure there have been other cases where liaisons and boards that they are liaison to have, there's been some friction that has developed. So with that in mind, I want to start us off with a brief statement, and here I will use the timer and see if I can do this in three minutes. I'd like to give a brief timeline of recent events with the Recreation Committee and its former liaison. I'm intentionally not using names, because as Dan wisely pointed out, we try not to make things personal here, but, so, I was, I was first debriefed on the events about the Rec Committee during a meeting with the outgoing chair on June 23rd. That was a Saturday after I was elected chair. And this was all after the events took place. For residents who don't follow the intricacies of town government, I should note that our boards, that this board assigns liaisons to all the board committees and commissions, volunteer boards, committees and commissions in town. So the following timeline presents the facts based on public record, as well as a few things I learned in the meeting with the outgoing acting chair. And I'm just going to go dates, statements, state statements. April 17th, the Recreation Committee voted to send a letter to the Select Board requesting a new liaison between April 17th and May 15th. So that's about a month. The Rec Committee Chair, at the advice of the Town Manager and Rec Division staff, reached out to the acting chair of the Select Board before sending the letter. The Recreation Committee Chair communicated with the Select Board Acting Chair and thought that the communication would lead to a positive outcome, so the letter was never finalized or sent. The Select Board, oh, my Wi-Fi is not working. I want the time back. The Select Board Acting Chair met with our former liaison to the Recreation Committee and discussed the addition of a select, of a second liaison in an attempt to alleviate the situation. May 15th, the Select Board met and voted to reappoint the previous liaison to Rec Committee. The board also voted to appoint a second liaison at the time. The events of April and May described above were not discussed publicly at Select Board meetings. As a result, not all Select Board members were informed of this issue prior to the vote. This board has been asked by the public which members were not informed. I can only speak for myself, and I was not. June 12th, at the next meeting of the Recreation Committee, the reappointed Select Board Liaison stated that he considered the April 17th meeting a public embarrassment. He also mentioned that he has been considering lawsuits against. I'm almost done. During the Select Board meeting, the original liaison to the Rec Committee stepped down from the position, and the board voted replacement. So that, to the best of my knowledge, is a summary of the events up to this point. If members of the public are interested in more details, I point you to the town websites and the website and the meeting minutes for the Rec Committee and the Select Board.
Which are also in our packet.
Which are also in our packet. As well as, there was a public records request on this matter that has some information as well, which is in a previous packet. So, so that's the timeline, and I just want to say two things before we start our discussion. Two issues in the timeline give me cause for concern. One is that the board voted liaison appointments to the Recreation Committee when some of our members had not been informed of important facts relevant, relevant to the appointments. And two, a Select Board Liaison was critical of and mentioned suing members of the committee to which he was assigned as liaison. And I feel that a liaison should not behave this way, and I'm worried that will affect our ability to attract and retain volunteers. With that, I would like to shift focus and have the board discuss what measures we can take to improve the process regarding liaison appointments, liaison roles, and liaison responsibilities. So who would like to begin? And I just.
Chairman.
Remind the board that the topic of discussion is how we move forward from here. I do not want to have this board rehash the past. I really, it's important that we move forward on this issue and just talk about what measures we can take. John?
I realize you don't want to rehash this. You are talking about me. The record needs to be set straight. You've just made a statement to all assembled here, to the TV audience, and for the record, that, you know, there was threats of suit. That is incorrect. If you read your packet, I'm assuming you did, it clearly points out two things. First of all, there was a discussion on June 12th that couldn't be a meeting because it was determined later that there was no quorum.
John, I'm sorry.
Please do not stop me. You can't stop me here. I have a right to respond to something that you have said about me that is incorrect. In those minutes, and I would draw your attention to them, it says clearly that Halsey states that although he considered lawsuit on the advice of an attorney, he made a clear decision not to do that and to put it behind us and to go forward. That is clearly stated. It was stated in person to the Recreation Committee, and it was backed up by going along with a step back in a resignation in order for us to get forward. So I take great issue with you characterizing something that you, A, were not present for, and B, take on hearsay, when in fact, the official record states exactly the opposite of that, that my position, it was stated that I was not going forward with anything. I wanted it behind us.
So the record you're stating does not indicate that you said you were considering.
It said I considered. It did not talk about any threats. It did not talk about going forward. As a matter of fact, it went on to say that quite the opposite. I had made a clear and conscious decision.
John, you said that. You said that. I hear it, and I know I read that in the minutes as well.
I would question why you would say what you just said then. If you were not trying to make it personal, it makes me wonder why you're doing what you're doing.
Because I understand at the end of the conversation, things had improved. But I feel, and if the board disagrees, we can stop right now. But I feel that the two issues that I pointed out, we don't want to have happen again. And so I'd like to move forward and discuss what we can do possibly with policy or anything like that.
Well, you're making an assumption that something happened. You've stated something that happened.
If the board does not.
That did not happen. And, you know, from a clarity standpoint, I think it's really important that we don't continue to say that. continue to say that there was some kind of a threat of lawsuit, when in fact, it wasn't.
John, so you're taking exception to the word threat.
I'm taking exception to the way that you're presenting this.
Let me just, I'm trying to focus on this.
I know how to focus. Don't worry about it.
All right. John, that's enough. We need to move on. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, can I just say something? I think there's a lot of lessons in all of this. I mean, I actually wasn't, never at any of the Recreation Committee meetings, and in fact, didn't know about sort of what happened until I read the minutes. So, you know, and I'm just one member of the board. And I think though, in reading kind of not only the minutes, I think the June minutes that are in our packet were draft minutes. I don't know if the Recreation Committee actually formalized the minutes of that meeting.
It can't be approved because it wasn't a meeting.
John, please don't interrupt.
So, the other part, the thing that, the thing I think that everybody has expressed here from, and this is in the public record, this is not any conversations that I had, but in the public record, that there's just a clear desire to move on, right? For people to acknowledge and, and this is what happened, but to move on. You know, John, whether you meant to say what you said or conveyed something, people took it one way, right? Now, whether or not you meant to convey that, that's another story. What you said, what was heard. That happens a lot.
Well, words do matter. When you say words.
John, please, John, I'm not going to ask you again. Please do not, Barry is the floor. Please do not interrupt.
Barry is directing a question to me.
I understand, John, but we're having...
I mean, this is called a discussion.
Yeah, no, this is called taking the floor away from Barry, and we just can't do this anymore. We can't. And the only way I can see that we can stop doing this is for let people to speak when they have the floor, not step on each other's words.
Now, the other piece that I just want to mention, because you also brought it up in your remarks, that I was the chair at the time, I was reached out to by the chair of the Rec Committee. And they told me that they wanted, that they actually took this action two weeks before that, and they voted to have a new, a new...
Request of that.
A request for a new liaison. Not a demand, but a request. In my role as chair, I reserve the right to make nominations for who's going to be liaison. Now, it became clear actually after the fact in reading in the public record, and the reason why this wasn't made public is that the Recreation Committee wrote a letter but decided never to send it. And they decide, I don't know why they didn't decide not to send it, but the conversation that I had, the impression that I was is that they were having the conversation chair to chair. And in that conversation, they talked about sort of sometimes the roles of John, you as a selectman, and also representing many boards get blurred, and that there could be some potential conflicts of interest. Me, in my role as the chair, right, I decided in order to have effective representation from the board of selectmen or Select Board to the Rec Committee, was to appoint a second liaison so that when those instances occur, there could be a recusal, and then there could be a recusal, and still there would be another liaison assigned there to do the work. I think if the Recreation Committee wanted us to know about that, they would have sent the letter. This was a conversation chair to chair. I used that in my judgment, and that's why I appointed a second liaison. It was not an attempt to hide anything or information to withhold. It was just my judgment on how best to solve the situation, based on the conversation that I had with chair of the Rec Committee. That was my judgment. That's what happened. Now, as far as sort of where we go from here, I know, Dan, you have some things that you've been working on, I know. But the bottom line is, is that I don't think you need policy to change policy, to basically do what's really self-evident, right? And common sense. Treat people with respect, whether that's us to people who we appoint, whether it's the community of us, although there's nothing in policy that can change that. You guys could be as mean as you want, right? Yeah, it's in salary, right? It's just common sense. And when there are things that need to get worked out, do what I do. Pick up the phone, right? I mean, and I think that, or as my friend George Katchen, I think I see him, he already said, "Go for a drink." Right? I mean, it's really, I think if we apply that and not just, you know, go at each other's throats, that a lot of these things could have potentially been rectified. There's a lot of things in the public record, there were a lot of things in the public record that talked about, people even within the Recreation Committee thought, "You know what? We probably should have brought John in and had the conversation." It's in the public record, right? Before voting to ask him to leave, and then waiting two weeks to call chair to chair. Okay? There's lessons here, okay? I think that the Rec Committee, of this board, we want to move on, and we want to just continue doing the good work. And that Vanessa and Dan, I know, will do with the record. So, I think that, well, I'll let Dan speak.
Sure. So, shall we move on to phase two here?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Can I suggest a short recess?
Would you like a recess?
Yes, sure.
Five minutes?
Yep.
All right. We're all here. Okay. So, continuing this discussion.
Yep.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I was able to take a look at our general policies in specifically Sections 1 and 2. We already have general operating policies for the board as a whole in Section 114. I won't repeat those ad nauseam. I think Bob's putting them up on the floor here.
114 is for liaisons, right?
No, 114 is general operating policies for the board. Section 1 pertains to board operating policies. Section 2 is more for appointed boards, committees, and commissions. What I've noted is there, and specifically, there's a code of conduct in our revised Section 224, the ones from May 2017 that we revised, that pertain really to boards and committees, but I saw some merit to applying those also to Select Board Liaisons. But there are things we can borrow from here and put them into the selectmen's, and things in the selectmen's we can probably borrow and put into... We're not here to do that tonight. That'll take a public hearing and for discussion. But those are just some preliminary thoughts I'd like to do. But I think, as Barry said, good old common sense and the stuff we all learned in the third grade should be the rule of thumb.
I couldn't agree more. Yeah, we do have a policy for liaisons that we can maybe pick up and translate.
You could put it there too.
You and I are working on a subcommittee, or on a subcommittee to address Section 2, am I not right?
You'll have to refresh my memory. I think you're right.
Thought we discussed that last time.
No, it is you two.
Is it? Yeah.
Right. And so, we'll get to work on that, and maybe we can propose some of your language in the liaison portion.
Yeah, we'll have to post those in the subcommittee meeting.
Yes, yes. It's been a busy summer.
So, without further ado, why don't we just take that under advisement?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Vanessa?
In regards to what the board did or didn't know, there had been a public question about who knew about the Recreation Committee's request. I, for one, did not know. And I'd like to make a request from the idea of moving forward, that we operate with a good faith effort of sharing relevant information with the full board. I don't think we need a policy for this, but we will make better decisions when we all have and are working with the same information. Plus, this would avoid embarrassing after-the-fact disclosures that come from public records requests. I don't, like I said, I don't think we need a policy, but a general agreement that it's best practice to share information that we gain from our interactions with other volunteers when it comes to making our decisions.
Chairman?
Yes.
Just one side comment to that. Kind of in light of what we learned from the open meeting situation, sometimes it is good to have one-off meetings with folks. And I think in this case, what Barry said, there was an honest attempt by the two chairs to work this out on the side, which would ultimately, and should have ultimately been, maybe that's where we fell down, communicated to the full boards. So, I wouldn't say automatically all information flows immediately, because sometimes there are side discussions among always a subforum with the best interest of both boards in mind. So, I think you said that in that spirit, but I just...
Yes.
Thank you, Bob. And if the board wants to communicate with a full membership, I would ask you to do that through me. I am not covered by open meeting law. I can communicate with one or five of you freely. We've learned from Ray that open meeting law has a halt, I guess I'll say, in the last year or two.
Yep.
And it's much better, such as the evaluation of the Town Manager or boards used to do that internally, you really shouldn't communicate. It's a risk when you communicate to each other as a whole. Yeah. Because if it stops there, it might be okay. I emphasize "might," but if it continues, it probably isn't okay.
Right.
So, if you direct things to me and ask me to send them to the board, I'm happy to do that.
Right. But we also, open meeting law, it seems simple, but it ain't. And if Bob communicates opinions, distributes opinions to the board, then the entire board has knowledge of the deliberation.
Information, not opinion.
Yeah, information. So, it's, you know, it's challenging. And I also think in, one thing that may help this is that, you know, even though it's difficult, sometimes we have to talk about difficult things on the board, and we should do that, I'd like to do that in a spirit of teamwork and not pointing fingers, "I got you," but just trying to improve our process and what we do. So, that's all I have to say. So that's all I have to say on that, okay?
I'm done.
All right. So moving on to the next agenda item at the recommendation of Bob, I know a lot of you are here for, my agenda, it's right here. So I hate to do this, I hate to take things out of order, but Bob has recommended to me, as some of the more experienced members on the board recommended to me, that people are here for certain things, I'm guessing, and that, so we're going to push Item C and D, I'm sorry.
B and C.
B and C, yes. Preview the warrant for November town meeting and authorize the sale of Brook Street, Redfield Street, subject to November 18th town meeting approval. We're going to push up the downtown parking discussion. I see Jean's here and ready to go. The downtown, the amplified sound permit request, and then the moratorium issue on a non-emergency gas war. So I'm hoping that we can, my guess is that a number of you are here for that. So Jean?
Thank you.
Jean Delios, Assistant Town Manager. I appreciate the flexibility tonight, as we have consultants here who have a presentation to provide on some work that we've been doing for the past five or six months on downtown parking. And as we said in one of the pieces in the packet, the downtown parking goal of getting an updated strategy for downtown parking really was defined in our Economic Development Action Plan, and that was three years, three years ago, when we finalized that plan and this board adopted it. So we're very pleased that we can bring the consultant team back, Nelson Nygaard, who did the initial downtown parking study in 2009, and come back and give us an update. It's a much more limited scope, but it's an update on what's happening now in the downtown parking, what are the trends, what are the utilizations, what are some ideas we should be thinking about. Essentially, it's a refresh. So I will stop there. I could go on and on, but I won't. And I want to introduce Allison Fletcher, who is here from Nelson Nygaard and Matt Smith, her colleague, who, Matt worked with us on the Economic Development Action Plan, so we're having a bit of a reunion tonight. So I'm going to give the floor to Allison, and certainly, if available, if there are any questions.
And if you're going to be honest with us, stand up just a bit, point to Matt and whatnot. Thanks, Jean, for the attention. Allison, I've been working with Jean for the past few months, doing a refresh on what we had done here in 2009.
Yep.
So what we've been doing is looking at working comprehensively, parking is sitting in your downtown in and of itself, it's supporting different uses, different economic activity, it's supporting your access system, whether that's people taking the train to downtown, whether they're biking here, whether they're parking their bikes here. And so we've been here and working with the traffic and parking committee as well, to look at what is going on in Reading today in relation to parking. We looked again at our past plan and what we've recommended there, and our charge is to figure out, are the recommendations that have been put forth there, have they been implemented? To what level have they been implemented, and which of those are still relevant based on the conditions we're seeing today? Reading has changed in the past ten years, and so our data is looking at how much has changed and where. So as mentioned, we've collected data here in 2008 to publish our 2009 study, which I believe was provided in materials that you have. And then we went out this year on June 14th, while school is still in session, to collect additional parking demand data across the downtown area. So I'm just going to go through some of those initial findings, as well as some of our initial recommendations related to that, and what are the steps going forward from here. So a high-level overview, when we go and we count, and we count parkings by walking up and down every single street, going in every single lot. We were here over a number of days collecting just an inventory thing. So what does the downtown look like to an outsider when they come here? When they see the sign, does it make sense to them? Is it intuitive? Is it customer-friendly? Does it make Reading a place that you want to be? In total, there are 3,400 parking spaces in the downtown, which is a lot. We work in communities across Metro West. Downtown area is very similar to Reading. This is a lot of parking spaces. There's also a lot of off-street parking currently. Of the parking that's there, over 2,000 of those are off-street spaces, and about 1,400 are on-street, parallel parking typically, spaces. We broke it down further. We did a lot of different cross-analysis with different types of parking. With the public parking in the town that you actually own, about 1,000 of those are on-street, and then you have, as you know, parking concentrated number of off-street lots. You also have some facilities for the respective town halls, and that's parking view control and parking that, you know, you could easily change the regulations of. You also have a number of permit access spaces. You sustain an employee parking program, which was in place when we were here back in 2008. That's still in very high demand. I understand that a lot of those permits sell out every year. And then in terms of private parking, there's a lot of different parking by different uses. There's a few off-street spaces by NMTA and other users, but that's largely off-street spaces. Just to compare, there's a full appendix in the data that, materials that are provided online, that shows the entire parking spectrum for the whole area. We just talked about the peak demand here. So this is data from 2008. What you're seeing here in the legend, blue is like parking that is under 60% full. As you get to green and yellow, parking is starting to approach what is like functionally full. So you're able to find a parking space there, but there are a number of cars parked there. When you get to red and pink, this is the old color spectrum from the old studies, it'll be different on the next slide. That's where you're seeing some of these areas up near NMTA and whatnot, that there's a lot of demand for parking in some of those.
So this is the snapshot at 11:00 AM of the study day?
So this is, this is the map from the peak. So the peak was from 11:00 to 2:00 in the past study. So this shows you the number of blue spaces here in the chart, is how many cars are parked. The red here is how many empty spaces there are. On the map, the areas that are brighter pink and red are the areas that are very full of cars.
Okay.
So as it happened in the past, and then also what we're going to see on the next slide, peak utilization is current around midday, when lunch is happening. We have a peak demand of employees being here, people coming and doing their errands, and people coming to get lunch in the middle of the day. Similarly, today, a lot of the demand is near the train depot itself. So we still have a similar blue with a red color ramp here, slightly less greeny colors. But closer to the downtown area, you're still seeing a lot of demand near the station itself. You're seeing a little bit of on-street demand at peak. This is the busiest time of day, typical day in Reading. You're seeing someone hating here, and we're seeing a lot of on-street availability in a number of areas. A number of these lighter blue lots, you're seeing less cars parked at certain times of the day. So over the course of the day, at the busiest time of day, about half of the spaces are full, a little less than half. If we go back and compare, that's a little less demand than we had seen in the past, even though there has a number of changes here. The data from the past study was collected in September of 2008, it was collected in June here, this time of year, just based on the calendar of this project. We do these projects at all different times of year in different towns across the Metro West area, and we tend to see somewhat similar patterns over the time of year. But it's just interesting, the demand, you know, may have grown in certain particular pockets across the downtown, but we're seeing generally similar trends to what we had seen before, which means that a lot of the past recommendations may still be valid based on the demand picture that we're seeing in the downtown, even though some practices have changed. This is, these are just some charts comparing some of the patterns. So looking at just public parking itself, your off-street lots are very popular. They get pretty full. There's still, of course, 90 to 100 spaces still available even at the busiest times, but they're definitely more popular than parking on-street, which is really surprising compared to most towns that we see. We talked with the committee, that may be related to people feeling uncomfortable parallel parking, because cars tend to speed on the low streets here, so maybe you feel pressure of somebody driving behind you, and you're feeling pressure to get into a spot, and you just give up and go to an off-street lot. So we talked about potential ways to do traffic calming in town, that needs to be looked at more comprehensively, maybe as part of a master planning process. In the private off-street facilities, we broke that down by use. And so customer parking is public-facing. It's privately owned, but it's like, if you're coming to CVS or other places, and you, or a particular retailer that happens to have an attached lot to it, that's what a customer comes here and finds is accessible to them. In residential spaces, we saw a lot of capacity in office. In some, what we're seeing here is there's a lot of potential with the lots that you have right now. The town has adopted shared parking policies and whatnot, but needs to do more work on that. The data demonstrates there's a lot of potential there.
Just really quick, when you say private residential, is that like people's driveways? Or, I mean, you're not counting that as available?
So we only counted lots that are larger than six spaces. So we're looking at, like, off-street lots associated with buildings.
But not like a drive
Apartment.
Not a driveway.
Oh, apartment, okay.
Yeah, apartment buildings, yeah. Yeah, or more than six parking spaces. So, and then, of course, the picture of parking is changing. We work with the town, they've been giving us an update on how many parking spaces are going to happen with each unit that's, or each development that's coming online. There could be as many as 300 additional parking spaces in the downtown that are provided in conjunction related to those various developments. So this is what we had recommended back in 2009. I'll go through some more detail on the next slide, but basically, we break things down to try to give the town an implementation plan to go forward with short, medium, and long-term recommendations. Short-term recommendations being things that should be low-cost and quicker to implement, something that can be done in the next year. Medium-term actions, you know, can be more moderate, may have a little bit more complexity, or might require some fundraising or earmarking of funds, could be done potentially in the next three to five years. Long-term actions in the like five to seven-year kind of range.
Do you define in lieu of parking payment? It's the bullet down there in the last page.
Yeah, we can talk about that in the next one here. So this, the red here is what has been implemented, to our understanding, since the last plan went in place. So in lieu parking has not been implemented, and it is not still, I think, in our suite of recommendations provided. So I just wanted to give an update, or charge to understand, as it has not been implemented. So the employee parking program, we recommended to expand that, and as our understanding, more permits have become available and have been sold. We recommended to establish a parking transportation fund, that's not there yet. We recommended to adjust time limits. The time limits are still two-hour, unregulated in most on-street areas across the area. We recommended to expand when parking enforcement hours happen to match when demand is. If demand is happening at dinner hours and when at particular areas, maybe parking should be enforced at that time, but that's not been changed yet. We also recommended to increase parking signage, and that's being evaluated as part of the wayfinding program right now, and we can help provide input on that, to make more customer-friendly parking, both wayfinding, and also when you drive up to a spot, what does it look like? Is this enough for me? And how long can I stay there? And giving that information to when you arrive to a spot. We recommended to incentivize the sharing of private parking. That has been allowed in zoning, and we're working with the town to help them, we're working with Jean to understand, you know, what needs to get in place to really incentivize that, to make it attractive, to make it feasible, what kind of agreements could be put in place to have that be something that the town can take on. We recommended to establish valid parking regulations, and to expand the off-street parking supply in places where you could strike more. Those have not yet been implemented. The town has reduced parking minimums, but only in this market district, which largely is related to the downtown. We've recommended establishing an in lieu parking payment, so a developer would pay a certain fee to the town to make use of public spaces where there is available supply, rather than providing it on their site. We also recommended providing some zoning relief for unbundling the cost of parking related to the cost of renting or selling a particular apartment. In addition to Jean, we're taking that off the table, based on what has been progressing with affordable housing developments here. And we also recommended to monitor parking utilization. Once you have this data in place, this is something we're going to talk about, but we would sustain that recommendation, that once you have the JRS tools in place, to continue looking at what is the demand over the course of the year as it changes, especially as you have new developments coming online. In the medium term, we have recommended to initiate a new commuter permit program related to NMTA lots. We have recommended to conduct paid parking pilot, so seeing if you did implement paid parking in select areas of downtown, what would be the effect of that. We'd also recommended to develop a commuter benefits program. We understand it has been implemented, that there have been more bike racks distributed throughout the downtown. The DPW informed us of the standards they've been following, they have a following best practice here. We would recommend that that continues to expand, to provide that option. And then one bus shelter has been installed, but the town should continue to work with NMTA and with their own resources to continue installing bus shelters here. We'd also recommended in the long term to implement parking maximums. So, you know, we're getting rid of minimums of, you have to, we're reducing the amount that you have to actually supply, but if we give a recommendation that you don't provide more than a certain amount, that'll make sure that we don't have so much excess parking in the downtown, and we have more space for housing and for restaurants and for everything you want to have as a draw here in downtown. We also recommended in the longer term to look at demand responsive pricing. So once you have smart meters and smart technology here in place that takes credit cards, that takes pay by phone, and additionally taking quarters, you can look at changing the price of the parking related to areas of hotter demand. And we'd also recommended expanding the walking network, because everybody that parks in downtown Reading is also somebody who walks, and we often see this in towns, that people like to park where it's easy to walk from the car to where they're going. Often, people want to park in front of their door, or if it's hard to cross the street, that may influence the picture of parking demand, so that's why those two go hand in hand. So working with Jean's committee and her staff, we have refined these and are presenting these here to you tonight, to look at what would we recommend now in the short term for Reading going forward. We would continue to expand the employee parking permit program, since it has been so successful, and also because there is ample off-street supply, both on and off-street supplies throughout the downtown. So the town can consider increasing, gradually increasing, the cost of outside of the supply permits available in the downtown, and we can work with the town to determine where this can be added, whether that's on or off-street. The past study, there's a lot of data in the past study, it's like a 300 huge report, but we found in studying turnover data, of how long people were staying in the downtown, most people stayed longer than two hours. And that is a sign that they want to stay here, they want to spend their dollars here. They want to, you know, do multiple errands and change what they're doing here in the downtown. And so in relation to that, we would recommend extending the limits of public parking to three, up to three to four hours in some key areas to support that desire. We would also explore options for additional longer-term parking, because there are some people who are hoping to stay all day, and the town can recommend where are those spaces. They're already doing that through some of the employee permit parking programs, but perhaps that could also be provided for people who are going to work, you know, in a cafe shop for a longer period in a given day and spend a lot of their money here. We would recommend in the short term to also explore the use of new enforcement-type technologies that does license plate recognition. Having this information would be very valuable to the town, to get on top of their enforcement. Handheld devices would become more affordable, and it would be easier for the town to do enforcement in some of the heavily utilized areas, having that technology in hand. Working with the current signage program, we recommend in the short term also updating the signage to make it more customer-friendly, especially if you're going to be changing how long people can actually stay and park. And downtown is a good time to also think about what do those signs look like and how legible are they, whether you're walking or driving, or whether you just park. And then we had also talked about the potential of piloting pickup and drop-off zones. So, you know, things like Uber and Lyft and those types of companies, and also taxis, compete for curbside uses with parking. And so there's a number of towns in the area that were piloting a program of designated particular areas, and let it, instead of having it be a free-for-all, where people just pick up, drop off wherever, within the app, it gives you a designated number of three to five areas where it says, "Go to this area to be picked up." So that's something that the town could try out, especially because there's a lot of on-street supply at the moment. And then another thing that the town could do very soon that would help a lot in terms of reinforcing a customer-friendly parking program here is to provide more information. We have a great map, some of the maps are already available online, but making those very easy to find and very legible, especially with respect to where the public can park. You can also work to have addresses given to all of the parking lots. So public, the two main parking lots, for example, could have an address, so when people are coming and they're planning to park, maybe it has a name, or maybe it also has an address, and you can type it in here, people, and it an address, and you can type it into your people, and it can actually get you to the lot rather than trying to guess which streets do I go down and missing it on the one-way circuit to get to your lot itself. A number of towns have also been working and partnering with businesses with having postcards with information about parking on it. So, while people are coming out of the coffee shop, they grab a postcard, "The next time I come here, I get smarter where I can actually park," because not everybody's on the web. So, that's what we recommend in the short term. In the medium term, we think the town should focus on expanding the walking network. Some of this can be done through simple striping and improved crosswalks, but focusing on places where you can improve accessibility to and from parking lots. We would continue monitoring parking utilization. We can get the GIS database, there's now a lot of online GIS apps, or with your phone, you can readily update how full or empty are the street segments and the lots. And so, we'd like to give the tools to the town, so that they can continue to evaluate that and try to monitor where is stuff getting beyond functionally full capacity. There's a number of areas where off-street parking supply could be added. We talked to the DPW staff about places where maybe angle parking could be further expanded and piloted, or maybe combined in a traffic calming program to see if more supply can be added in certain areas. And then, as mentioned, we're going to be working with Jean to get further tools to incentivize shared parking and having the right resources and that the town is ready to go forward with that now that it's in zoning. The town should continue to work to implement low-cost bicycling facilities. Again, this is just striping often, or also providing bike parking. Bike parking installation near the businesses, there's a lot of new cafes and whatnot coming on downtown, and MAPC and other programs provide support and guidance on how to do that. I think that's mostly it for me. And for the other, we already talked about bus shelters, but also the valet permit parking. That's something that could potentially be piloted. It could be something that's potentially championed by a private owner on private property, something that the town could consider. And in the longer term, we still, we would recommend moving towards meters and pricing and demand-based parking in the short to medium term. That's still from what we're seeing in the data, a longer-term picture kind of thing. The town could work on piloting something, but we would recommend that be more like a five years out, and also if you see it in the data, five years out kind of measure. So, that could vary, and also the technology for these things is just changing rapidly, both of the vendors and like what is available to do parking. So, there'll probably be a combination of smart meters and kiosks and pay by phone for the next five years, there could be some more technology built online as well. And once warranted, and once there is increasing off-street supply, we would recommend increasing the price of employee permits, just because there's increasing demand for it, and so that should go hand in hand and monitor that data over time. We would also, once you are paying for parking in downtown, we would recommend establishing a parking and transportation fund, where the dollars that are collected through that parking program are also reinvested in the maintenance and operations of the program itself, and also in supporting things, whether it be bike racks, whether it be the walking connections, restriping crosswalks connecting to parking lots. And once funding is available, we would recommend also extending the parking enforcement hours to reflect when there's areas of highest demand that might possibly be evenings or weekends. A number of towns are moving towards that. In the longer term, too, there may be, now that there's going to be more retail and other uses coming downtown, looking at with this added business activities coming downtown, there may be some new measures in terms of monitoring and regulating commercial loading and when that happens and where that happens. That's just another long-term consideration. And the three other things kind of all go hand in hand is that we would recommend looking at circulation at a larger level as it relates to the parking system itself. Looking at the one-way street system, how that comes back to walking safety, how that comes back to parking access, where are there potentials for road diets or traffic calming in downtown to make it more appealing to cross the street, and also to keep people here in downtown. And then, you know, once there's more demand and once you have a lot more activity going on in the downtown area, what is the demand for having more people biking in the downtown? And is there any potential to provide facilities for that? Because everybody that bikes is one less person driving their car and parking in downtown. So, with that, those are the draft recommendations that we presented. We're going to be working with Jean, we're going to be on the agenda at the Economic Development Community Meeting on October 17th at 7:00 PM, and then we'll be working with Jean to continue refining these recommendations.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
John has had a question.
John? So, kind of throughout your presentation, you talked a lot about the creation of on-street parking. Now, I know we can't make any more pavement, and I alluded to the fact that maybe there's some spots we could angle park, which, you know, allows you to get more cars. Can you elaborate on the expansion of off-street parking for me? I'm a little stuck, because I know there's a finite amount of space.
There's a number of areas that DPW had pointed out, like on Haven Street, where the street curb-to-curb is somewhat wide for one-way circulation, so you could pilot having angle parking, which will get you a lot more capacity.
On one side, yeah.
On one side. So, even if you have parallel parking.
But that's where we are, right there, right?
This is actually in front of Cafe Nero right now.
Oh, yeah, okay. But there's angle parking also on Haven Street.
On the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, but DPW believes there's potential for expanding where that type of supply layout happens on the street. There could be a number of areas also where you may be striping the length of parking, and maybe the length of parking is really long, and you could evaluate maybe making it a little bit shorter. So, down to like 18 to 20 feet rather than a 25 feet to gain supply on particular blocks. And also, if there is a traffic or mobility study looked at at all, if there's any excess lane capacity in any areas, which the DPW traffic engineers believe there may be in some areas, then that means you have pavement available for other uses, and is it going, becoming angle parking, or is it becoming something else?
So, just one other quick question, and then I'll be quiet. Your presentation makes me think that at the peak time, half the parking spaces are, I mean, that happens to be my personal experience, that I, you know, getting a parking spot, but I hear anecdotally all the time about it, but it sounds like you're telling us it's not really, we really do have substantial parking. You know, I mean, the municipal lots, for example, based on what I think I saw there, and you can, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a lot of space in the municipal lots at peak time.
Yeah.
Which is, I think, most of us probably would have not expected that, but, I mean, I'm guessing this stuff is telling the truth, right? I mean, public off-street parking, at its, at its, at its peak is, has 90 spaces.
Yeah, it's, there's also, there's more detailed numbers in the 2008 report as well, but the general trend also matches what we saw in the past as well. And, you know, anecdotally, yes, people may have difficulty parking on a particular block on a particular day, but having better information, having the data organized is going to help improve that picture.
Well, it sounds like if you walk 200 feet instead of 20, that parking is probably not as big a problem as it might, as we might think it is.
If you think of the kind of the culture of parking, right? So, you know, people will say, "I went down Haven Street, and I couldn't find a spot because I wanted to go to the frame store," I was making that up, "and there was no, nothing left on Haven Street, and they have to go around there," they say, "There's no parking." When in fact, if you go, anybody go to Dabio's, right, in Market Street, you probably have to walk twice as far from the parking space that you have, but because your mindset is like, "All right, I'm in the parking lot, I'm already here." So, if we change the culture of like, okay, if you walk 200 feet, 300 feet.
Well, if you wanted to go to the frame store, and you couldn't find a spot in front of the frame store, the municipal lot probably has 20 spaces.
Right, but you couldn't find a spot in front of the frame store, so now you think, "Oh, there's no parking." But in reality, you walk further.
Yes.
At a Dabio's or Legal C or whatever than you would if you parked on the next street. So, it's sort of change, it's changing the mindset, and maybe having the signage better, where people realize, "Okay, I'm not going to get the spot in front of the store, but I know there's one and a half a walk away." And then, you know, you sort of feel better about it. I think that's part of it.
Do stores, I've never noticed this, but do stores ever say parking available in municipal lot?
Should.
I mean, it seems like that's a culture change that you're talking about, Barry, and I think you're right, that it's a, you know, you kind of got to readjust when people look at things.
I think Dan has his hand up.
Yeah, I have a generic question. So, we've seen a number of near-term, medium-term, long-term ideas. Each of those groups of items needs to be turned into some kind of prioritized action plan, because there will be some actions this board will have to take, maybe some town meeting will have to take. How's that process going to go forward? Will your staff begin that soon? Do you have a plan for that?
Sure. I think the next critical path item is to have a community forum on this.
Yeah.
And when we meet in October, this was really kind of the preview.
What do you want to get out of that forum?
I think we want to have the businesses represented.
Yeah.
That's one of the main goals, and I've talked individually with a lot of the business people. I get it, it's hard to make meetings, especially as an entrepreneur, it's very difficult. But if, we've given lots of notice, and the board is out now for October 17th, and hopefully we can get our community partners and stakeholders, business representatives and other property owners, and people that live in the area to come and be part of this conversation so that we can figure out what can we do and what can we prioritize that the community would be supportive of.
So, you're going to have interactive sessions in that forum on the 17th?
We're going to have a couple of things on the agenda.
Okay.
And we haven't quite worked through all the, the way we're going to, we're going to get to that, but I think getting some feedback would be really helpful before we get too far down the road.
So, Jean, to that thought about like kind of organizing what the 17th would look like, you know, we were just talking about before, I was at CPDC last week, we talked about kind of, you know, the 40R district design guidelines. I would hope that we would invite CPDC to that meeting, because one of the things, you know, we've been now vetting projects, right? We've been vetting projects, okay, Gould Street, what are you going to do for parking, right? But what we haven't done, because now we do have a critical mass of developments, is now to think about design guidelines that say, you know, give them incentive for doing some type of a shared parking arrangement now, because a lot of the times their spaces may not be utilized, or sharing parking between two projects and trying to figure that out. Because right now, we just do it project by project, and so if we're going to be redoing design guidelines, it might be important to kind of have them there so we can maybe look at some sort of more strategic parking strategies when it comes to vetting individual projects.
If I could just comment on that, the models that we've been looking at, some of the area communities do this, where, you know, we have a bank that closes at 5:00, and then we have restaurants that get busy at 6:00. Wouldn't it be great if we could have an arrangement where those restaurant goers could use the bank parking lot?
Yeah. And so, the bank would say yes if the restaurant begs at that day.
Well, the model that we're looking at is where the municipal government actually becomes the conduit through which that arrangement is established.
Yeah.
And we absorb the, all of the liability, we absorb everything.
Yeah, that's important.
And we are leasing, I'll pick on Eastern Bank. We, the town is leasing Eastern Bank's parking lot from Eastern Bank from 5:00 to 11:00 at night. And then, the town is in turn subleasing to what?
Yeah.
It's done in a number of other communities, and Nelson Nygaard has pulled all those legal documents, so we know how to do it.
Can we do that in MBTA lots, too?
We actually get the MBTA Vine Street lot for a dollar a year, and it's 43 parking spaces.
Wow. I want to acknowledge Vanessa.
So, Dan, you asked my question, so Jean, thank you for answering it. But as far as, I'm the liaison to RMLD, and Dave Talbot, who's a commissioner there, mentioned the idea of partnering with the town to establish electric charging stations in the downtown area or at the T parking. And so, I think as we discuss this, if that's the future of motor vehicles, then perhaps that's an avenue we can pursue to as we're discussing the plan as a whole.
I can answer something with that. So, I used to be the director of traffic and parking in Salem, so when it comes to implementation, for things like that, there's actually many grant programs that you can actually apply for, that can actually assist with you with that, maybe just in pilots. But I think if you're looking at the idea of looking at changes in timing, different regulations, you obviously will have to look at that as the governing entity when it comes to ordinance and things like that, depending on how it is. So, the best way to do it is really to take these recommendations, the short-term particular, and kind of do a package, because I think you really nailed it. People have to start thinking of downtown as one whole parking system, not as, there's a lot here, a lot here, a lot there, thinking of the whole way. So, that's the whole communications. Salem has a postcard, has a website called Parking in Salem, it has various things like, those are implementation measures that I actually can bring to the table as part of this and work with our team. It's all about the entire package. I mean, so I can just speak to, you're at a plant, I think you're probably starting to hit maybe a tipping point soon with a lot of development. 10 years ago, Nelson Nygaard did a study for Salem, I was involved with some of the, I would say, the re-implementation as Salem grew so much, we had to take the exact strategies again and start like revising how we were managing that parking. It is very delicate, and parking's emotional, that's why people think there's no parking, there is parking, they don't get right in front of that location they want, they get upset, but they get upset when there's no knowledge of what, where to go next. So, that's what I mean by thinking of that long-term. Allison really hit it. Circulation's important. When you get down the street and there's no parking, and all of a sudden, you know there's parking on the corner, or you might be, but then you have a one-way street, and you have to go up. So, you might even want to be thinking of some of those pairs. I was thinking of the municipal lot behind the CES, like it's a one-way in, there's plenty of room to do a one-way in and one-way out. So, I mean, if you think of those things.
Try that at a town meeting already.
These are things that should really be challenging to get people to rethink, because that can be part of your problem, because if some people think it's inconvenient to go one way or the other, they're not going to want to park there, and that's going to hurt your businesses.
I agree with that.
And I'm an old economic development planner, so I'm about bringing transportation and economic development together. It's not, they're not exclusive, they have to be done in conjunction, and so I think that's something that we can really work with to think about.
And I'm sure you're aware, we have a number of 40R projects going up in the downtown area. They will, they will be filled with businesses that's going to attract more downtown parking, which is what we want. But, so I guess I would ask Jean, or Bob, or you, how the development summit will be structured?
I can start the answer. It started tonight, we wanted the board's feedback. What areas do you think you have concern in, the community have concern in? I think Jean hit on the most important point. It's not a top-down presentation of the community, it's what is the business community want.
Yeah.
They have to be a very loud partner, because they can come in later and say, "Well, why did you do this? Why didn't you do that?" We have to hear from them now, because if we're going to start making changes, they need to be changes. Jean and I know from experience, not every, there's not going to be any change that's unanimous in the business district.
Yeah.
There's going to be some that are favored by some businesses, not by others, and that's okay. But there's no sense in us having a top-down lecture, we need to have a community discussion. So, that's the only theme that I've had, and we really wanted to bring this to you now to give us time to plan an October meeting as to the component. So, I don't expect it now, but I'd welcome every board member's feedback and thoughts of what should the meeting have or not have.
Bob, and I'll float this out to the other members now. Perhaps a similar presentation that was given tonight with options on addressing the problem be given to everyone who comes to the Economic Development Summit. And that way, they're given a number of choices on how to keep, how we can keep up with pork.
You know, I've also thought, I haven't shared with the staff yet, we have all those voting tools, those handheld devices.
Yeah, I was thinking of that.
That we have in town meeting to serve AP.
Yep.
What do you think about this?
Don't miss an opportunity.
So, how does the board feel about that sort of structure for the meeting, so that the business community gets the ideas of the options, and then they have input as to what options they sort of?
It's great.
Be interested. I mean, in the business community, they're going to, I mean, they're...
I mean, in the business community, they're gonna, I mean, depending on where your store is, they're gonna have very widely different, you know, if you run the convenience store, you don't want two-hour parking in front of a convenience store, you want that turned around. And obviously, we want to encourage people to stay downtown, but then I've heard other people saying, you know, people park here, and then now, you know, it doesn't turn over fast enough, and, you know, but maybe if we had, you know, better wayfinding, so that people knew that, okay, you can just go around the corner and there's another parking spot, that might work. So you're gonna get, I think we're gonna get a lot of different opinions from the business community about what the right solution is.
Yeah. And so...
Hopefully compromise will, hopefully now, and wayfinding.
Bill?
Andy.
I didn't think I was taking public comment on this, but I forgot.
I'll give my public comment anyways, I was there. Route 28 was finished in 1930. 1931, they started having parking problems, we have the problems with it. It hasn't been changed since then, so I don't think we guys want to change it. I think we're gonna waste a hell of a lot of money and time.
Well, we will try not to, and we will try to improve it. We're not gonna solve it.
I think you're right.
Every quarter since 1931, it's the same kid. Tremendous amount of time wasted, and all due respect to the experts.
Yeah, I hear you.
And the experts, I want to tell you what you want to hear.
Yeah.
Just one other thought about, I know you've sort of talked about sort of paid parking kind of down the road. Not everybody noticed today, but if you're going, if you're going down Woburn Street, there's the MBTA lot on the left as you're going downtown, that was $4 parking, it is now $6 a day parking. So there is a tendency now for people to realize that there, you know, that paying for parking close to where you want to be, that obviously they don't raise prices, they don't think people are gonna pay it. So I think we should look at sort of monetizing some of the, you know, especially around the commuter rail. I know we have, that's gonna force us to look at the stickers again.
I was just gonna raise that, a little bit off-topic, but we do, we promised we would do a one-year review of that, I think.
Yes, we did.
The time is coming up.
It is, it is.
So, you know, the fact that they raised the prices means that, you know, they realize that there's a demand, and, you know, and a cost to maintaining those lots, so, you know, we have to kind of look at that, too. And then, you know, that adds an implication for during the day downtown parking, so, and it's...
Yeah. Bob, in regards to the increased fees for Depot, and in the next meeting or two, as Dan recommended, could we have an update on how many permits have been sold, and where we are at that?
We could do that. I'll have to talk to the chief, but my gut feel is February is a better time, because so many people buy it for the annual pass.
Right.
We can give you an update anytime.
Yeah.
Let me talk to the chief.
Well, but it's been implemented since February, right? Since last, since...
It was in the winter.
2017.
Yeah.
So that's, that's when people started sending the emails, when they went in to get their...
Oh, so it goes February to February, not by calendar year?
No, it goes calendar year.
Okay.
But I'm saying that in December, you start seeing people advance purchase for their calendar year, and that continues into January, so it depends how you want to handle it.
All right, so you're saying we're gonna do this another year, it's kind of baked in right now.
I think you'd get a cleaner picture in February than you would in December.
So we have two years of data, essentially.
Well, a year, a couple months.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But I'll ask the chief, I could do more.
Okay. Does that sound good for the board? I know it wasn't on the agenda, but it is related. Okay. I'd like to move on, if we could. Any other questions? Yes.
Thank you. Ian Dure, Front 19 Major, I have a business on Route 28, and some of the concern I have is the two-hour parking. I know you talked about maybe making it three or more in some areas, but I'm fortunate enough to have a couple of 30-minute spots. My next-door neighbor, dry cleaner, he has two-hour spots in front of his, he'd like to have 15-minute spots. So I would like you to think about going the other way in certain instances as well. I think that would help some of our businesses, too.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, hopefully the economic development summit will bring some, you know, help us resolve and address some of these issues. Okay.
It wants to be what he wants in a system that is there.
Thank you very much for coming. Excellent presentation. Thank you, Gina.
And if I could just recognize Andrew Nicol, I forgot to mention his name, he's our staff planner, and this is his first board of selectmen meeting himself.
Do you want to stand up?
I'd like him for coming.
Stand up. Is he at a meeting?
Next time, sit in the front, so we can see.
Sorry, didn't mean to embarrass you, Dan.
No. Thanks for pointing that out, too. Before we move on to our next agenda item, I just wanted to report on something that happened to me when I was coming back from the men's room. A man rather aggressively told me it was time for me to step down from chair, and that the, that we needed a real leader in this position. This concerns me, because it's a rather aggressive thing to say to a town volunteer. We all have feelings, although sometimes we may not see it. And John, Vanessa, Barry, Dan, and myself, we all put a lot of time into getting elected, and we all put a tremendous amount of work into doing this job as best as we can. So I hope that...
That's just unfortunate. You know, it's, you know, we spent half an hour talking about how we as a board of selectmen are gonna work with volunteers, and I made it, I made it what I thought was a joke, which is, you know, you can beat up on us, right? Because it's part of your job.
There you go.
You know what? I was really, it was, that started that, I apologize.
No.
But it's, it's just not right. You know, I mean, everybody here earned the right to be here, right? And so, you know, people are entitled to their opinions, but, you know, rudeness is just not, it's just not the way to be.
No.
I'm sorry that that happened.
It's, I mean, I cry myself to sleep at night, but I want the public to know that if any board member reports that sort of behavior to me, we will follow it up, it's just, we can't. Okay, next topic. Amplified sound permit request, Saturday Night Lights. It's got a great sound.
Mr. McFatt.
Mr. McFatt.
You big with us, Mr. McFatt?
My presentation, Bob, this should be about 45 minutes. And I'm gonna try to get down to about 45 seconds, if that works for you there.
I got the timer, if you want.
Please, please. Carl McFattan, one of the owners of SNL, Saturday Night Lights Football, this is our sixth year. First year, we had 200 kids this year, we made some adjustments, we'll probably have about 920. The exciting part is, the biggest growth are the young ladies. We actually have the largest in-town girls program in New England.
Really?
Yeah, I think there's only two towns that do it, so, one out of two is...
That's all right.
Yeah. No, but seriously, we're gonna have close to 250 girls, young ladies, down there playing, and they're pretty ruthless. It isn't even so much the young ladies, it's the mothers that usually are the coaches, and they get into it, which is exciting. One of the things that has made our program so successful is the fact that we like to have a carnival type of atmosphere, from a DJ playing, reason I'm here, as well as, you know, we have sausage vendor, fried dough vendor. Parents are just down there having fun. Kids have so much structure in their lives, and this is just fun. No winners, no losers, they go down there, and, you know, back to the days where everyone's trying to make the travel team, you have the kids that never played a sport before down there playing, and that's the exciting part. One of the things every year we do is take on a cause. Two years ago, it was Food Pantry, last year was Mission of Deeds, and it was actually the largest fundraiser, shall we say, for the Mission of Deeds. I think there was 500-plus items donated to that, which we enjoy. Couple of things that we always do, one to benefit, the fireworks, I believe the money goes to the Friends of Reading Football, is we have a mother-son, mother-daughter game on a Friday night, and again, the mothers, the mothers actually do get aggressive with the children, you know, from that aspect of it. And the other thing that we always do is, you know, I call it the Red Cross Game. It's the Thursday before, excuse me, the weekend before Thanksgiving, where a couple years ago, we had a teacher who passed away at Joshua Eden, and they did, the fathers got together to do a fundraiser, to help the family. And last year, one of our first coaches passed away, and we did, all the proceeds go from that. Typically, it's around $25,000 that's raised. The reason we call it the Red Cross Game is because it's people like my age that think they can still play, and pulled hamstrings and sprained ankles, so everyone needs medical attention after it, so, which is great. So we like to always do something to giving back to the community. One of the biggest things, again, is that the local businesses actually thrive off of this, because if you, typically, from what I've spoken to, the food establishments, because obviously it's on Saturday nights, about half an hour after a session ends, because each session is about an hour and 15 minutes, you have the Capri's, the Pizza World's, the Chili's, they just get flooded. And if you go in there, the kids are wearing their game shirts, people are seeing, hey, I haven't seen you all week, you know, a neighbor, hey, you wanna go grab a pizza, that type of stuff. So, which is nice, really building such a community, part of it. We're requesting our sound permit, which we've had every year, we've never, knock on wood, had any issues with, with parents. We've actually perfected being able to amplify all of Birch Meadow with one speaker. And how we did it was, I'm an accountant, I had no idea, but we had someone, a young high school student who was in music, knew exactly what to do, said get up on the pressbox platform and bounce it off the wall, and it ended up getting that way. So we ended up getting, instead of directing it towards the B-Lord Drive by Coolidge, that area, we're actually bouncing it off the wall to come back to get Turf 2 and the multipurpose and the softball field. So we're just asking for kind of our annual permit, shall we say.
Yeah. This is for how many nights?
We go eight, eight weeks. We start the first, excuse me, the Saturday after Labor Day, so the eighth, which is the second Saturday, and knock on wood, we finish by Halloween, but if we get rained out, we usually go one week. We've never gone more than, say, the second week of November. We end up losing a week because they have a band competition, which is enjoyable, because I live on Wakefield Street, which is about a mile and a half away, and I can hear the competition going pretty well. So, you know, we've never really had issues with that. We go from 4 o'clock to 9. Employment-wise, I think we've hired 95 high school kids to work.
Really?
Yeah. And then we keep getting calls and calls, which is great. And we just keep, you know, getting them in there, and the kids get some responsibility, but it also helps the kids, the high school kids realize they're role models, because when you're refereeing a kindergarten first grade game, the kids looking up to them, they realize they gotta, you know, act a certain way for them. And we haven't had any issues with coaches, because we explained to them that Belichick works down in Foxborough, not at Turf 2, shall we say. So it's been, it's been exciting. We enjoy the police department coming down, a lot of times because I like no one's in town, everyone's down there. We'll have between, almost four, between four and 4,500 people down there during that time, which is, which is great.
Do you ever think of having a fire department, police department?
Again?
We have to consider injuries.
Who's gonna cover workman's comp?
That's probably the...
The overtime?
That was the, I'd say pleasant part of the evening so far, thank you.
Yeah, no.
It's, it's...
So again, yeah, we invite everyone down there. Again, you gotta understand, this is your program, in terms, this is a Writing Rec program, we're the vendor that runs it, so any feedback that you'd like to see improved, enhanced, reduced, love to have it.
Well, other than suggesting that we have a select board team, obviously, any other thoughts?
I can see the halfback right there.
And have the ambulance waiting. No, I, any, Dan, Barry?
Just that we need to call for a motion on the amplified sound, it's in our packet.
All right. Anyone else? John, Vanessa?
It's a fabulous program that is great for the community, and has been from the day, from the year it started. Just glad to see it growing.
Thank you. Great to see young people out.
Great to come back home and watch it in full force on a Saturday night.
It's really a family day. That's the thing that's different than many of the programs.
Yeah. And one thing that's nice is, like, for instance, Chief Sagal is down there with his son, and you see him, you know, he's not in uniform, he's a regular person, you know, seeing the different forms, or different teachers, and town workers, and stuff like that, so it really is a community event.
It's very valuable for the kids. So, a motion?
Move that the board approve the amplified sound request from Saturday Night Lights.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next up, the National Grid, natural gas work, non-emergency, national, national, natural gas. I have to give a brief introduction, because, excuse me, we requested feedback from Town Council on this, and Dan, I think everyone has seen it, right?
I'm not sure, I think if they did. August 17th letter from Ray, you might want to put that up.
Yeah, I think it was, because I almost responded to everybody, and...
And so everybody knows, you asked me to help you on this, so we kind of kept it just to the two.
Yep.
To devise some plans for the board to vote on.
You know if that was in your packet?
I didn't see it.
There was a, the resolution was in the packet.
Yeah.
The resolution's there, I did not see a letter from Ray.
Yeah.
I must have missed it.
Okay.
Okay. That has not been circulated among us.
I, I...
Has it?
I don't know.
I don't think, I have not seen it, that I'm aware of.
If I could, can I help with any of this from the union?
Yeah, just, just one second, I want to get our business straight. I, John, I will double-check.
I can go get it and put it up.
But the gist of the Town Council's advice...
Right here.
Yeah, what date was that? Because you requested, Bob, send that to the board.
Eight, 17.
Can you...
So it didn't make the packet, but it's around...
Right, because...
But isn't Ray's kind of, the gist of Ray's letter kind of in this reworked?
Yeah, so...
It was MSG.
Right, so, so originally, Dan and I were talking about a compromise situation where we would have, because safety is the real concern to us, we're reluctant to get involved in union, but safety is the concern, and we originally had wanted to require the utility to...
Cancel our deal.
To inform the customer that replacement workers, I think was the term we ended up with, were being used to do the work. Town Council advised us that this would be a moratorium, or adding something, adding the sort of requirement to a permit line, would be difficult to defend, in his opinion. So what you see, what's come out in the packet, and, I don't know, Bob can bring it up on the screen.
Yeah, we're working on it here.
Oh, actually, it's all in front of you.
Yeah, we have it.
You do have it?
Yeah, I passed it out.
I can just quote some excerpts from it. So this began as, looking at this as a potential moratorium, and we did receive a communication from Ray Miaras of Miaras in Harrington, our Town Council. Bob, we have a number of different types of permits that involve gas. Grants of location, known as in Writing as poll and gas permits, and I think it's important to go through, I'll try to keep it brief. Poll and gas permits are issued by the Select Board. Street opening permits are issued by the Engineering Department. Site plan approvals are issued by CPDC or planning staff. Building permits issued by the Commissioner of Buildings, Philly Inspector, and plumbing permits issued by the Plumbing Inspector. Each of these permits involves the application of certain established standards, which may derive from statutory or regulatory requirements. But in general terms, assuming that the requirements are satisfied, applicants are entitled to receive their permits. The Select Board wants to adopt a policy placing a moratorium on the issuance. Some or all permits that involve gas, it needs to understand that. If that policy is challenged, it will be very difficult to defend, since by hypothesis, the moratorium would prevent issuance of permits to persons who are fully qualified to receive them. This is the key paragraph. In addition, many of the permit granting officials listed above derive their power from state law or town bylaws, not the Select Board.[1758.23] the Select Board. Therefore, the Select Board does not have any actual authority to place a moratorium on such permits. Finally, it appears that the moratorium at issue here is directed only at National Grid employees and contractors, not others. The purported justification for this focus is that the regular union workers are better qualified to do the work in a safe manner than the replacement workers. While I think this is probably true, I'm having trouble seeing how that fact can be translated into a moratorium. If work is to be undertaken by fully licensed gas worker, a fully licensed gas worker, I think that we have to assume that an acceptable level of safety will be achieved. Even if we think that every union worker is better qualified than his or her replacement, it is a slippery slope for the town to get into the business of making judgments about the relative qualifications of otherwise fully licensed workers. Uh, as a result of that email, uh, the thrust changed to, uh, a more of a recommendation, uh, that a warning be issued. Well, the, there's a draft that Andy and I have come up with, have gone back and forth to Town Council.
Yeah.
And we have it up here. Uh, the key, there are several whereas's here, which are kinda derived from other documents that we've seen. Uh, and the, be it therefore resolved are the important ones here, that the Redding Select Board urges National Grid to end the lockout of its gas workers, so the gas line inspection services and repairs may continue to be performed by qualified and properly trained employees. And be it further resolved, the Redding Select Board strongly urges National Grid to disclose in writing to affected property owners whenever it is using replacement workers for gas line inspection, services, and repairs, thus leaving it up to the property owner to make the call. And be it further resolved, that the Redding Select Board urges National Grid to agree with a fair and equitable contract that provides for competitive wages and benefits commensurate with the technical skills and qualifications possessed by members of United Steelworkers, Local 12003, District Four, Boston Gas Workers Union. So that is what you have before you as a suggested motion tonight, obviously subject to the will of the board and any amendments that you may care to offer.
So, um, so we can move further, Dan. Um, can you propose this as a motion so that we may deliberate?
Sure. I will move, I guess this is known as version three of the draft, resolution in support of United Steel Workers, District Four, Local 12003, 1203, however you say, Boston Gas Workers Union, uh, be adopted, uh, by the Select Board.
Is this the thing that was at our place tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that the one you just read?
Yes.
I know you said there's three versions, but...
This is the third, and that's the one Town Council reviewed.
The other ones have not come out.
One of them was in our packet, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's early on.
I assume that's version one.
Might've been one, yeah.
That was, uh, shouldn't have been sent out, because we were still, we're having conversations with the lawyer. Um, and, and Ray gave some...
It's no harm, no foul, but yeah, you're right.
Yeah. So this is what we, um, were able to come up with, with Ray's recommendations. He had some edits, uh, that we incorporated, and, um, Dan and I thought it would be a good place to start, um, the discussion, so...
Thought made that motion.
Yeah, so he's made, second. Okay, so, um, let's talk about this. Barry, and then Vanessa.
Um, I mean, this is, I mean, I read the first version, and, and, you know, while, I liked a lot of it in there, I just sort of thought, like, how do we even enforce that? Um, but, you know, the fact that we turned it now, that we're encouraging, first of all, we're still, we're encouraging National Grid to let these guys go back to work, right? Um, but, you know, which is the most important thing. But also, too, I'm assuming that when, you know, somebody calls National Grid and they show up, they just assume it's the regular guys. And I think it's important that the homeowner, or the business owner, whoever it is that's engaging them, know that, you know, these aren't the regular guys, these are the replacement workers. And then that family, that business owner, that concern, could make the choice about, well, you know what? I don't need it right away. I went away to the, to the, you know, the eighteen is back, um, you know, in the fold. So I like that idea, and it's not, you know, and it's encouraging them. It's not something that we can, can enforce it, but at least we're on record. Um, I do wanna make one amendment to this. Um, and it's not in the body of the, of the motion itself, but actually in the title. Uh, we're calling it a resolution in support of the United Steel Workers, District Four. And I think you kind of alluded to it earlier, the idea about sort of how, you know, we're sort of reticent to get involved in, you know, um, collective bargaining negotiations between a private entity and a union. That's not our role.
Right.
But our role is to protect the health and safety of the Town of Redding. So I would hope that this is viewed as a friendly amendment, that we just strike the title of this.
Uh-huh.
A resolution, uh, a resolution to support the health and safety, uh, to promote health and safety in Redding.
Do you wanna specify in regard to gas coming?
In regards to gas, yeah. I mean, so we're not, we're not doing it in, I mean, obviously, we want, the workers go back to work, and there's a contract, that's great. But we're not doing this to support the worker. We're doing this to support safety in Redding.
I get it.
Louder has no objection if the second are...
Yeah.
You were the last part, the health and safety.
Uh, regarding gas installation.
Oh, there you go.
In the town of Redding.
Um, who seconded this?
Vanessa.
Vanessa, are you okay with that change?
Yes.
Okay.
Discussion.
Yes, now, so, so...
On the amendment, work further.
Well, you have to take it forward.
It's a friendly amendment, so.
It's a friendly amendment.
Adopted as the main motion. Oh, you, did you want to just?
Yes.
I'll make, then that should be made as a formal amendment, and we should discuss it and vote on it.
Okay.
I thought it was...
Isn't it, isn't it an amendment?
It is, if someone objects.
And it's seconded. I didn't say I wanted to object. I wanna talk about this.
We will, we will. This was just an amendment, but the title.
You wanna talk about the title or the whole thing?
Well, you know, I mean, I do wanna talk about the whole thing, but the title is part of the whole thing.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I mean, I think that's a step in the right direction. I think we're straying into areas.
All right, Barry, why don't you make that as a formal amendment, and have someone second it, and then we can discuss it.
I'll, I'll, I'll second your formal amendment.
You make sure you read what I did and see if you agree.
So make an amendment to, uh, strike the title and replace it with a resolution in support of health and safety regarding gas installations in the town of Redding.
Now, you can either take discussion only on that, or you can take it on the entire...
Let's, let's focus on the, on the title, um, and have discussion on the title. Any discussion on the title?
Yes. I think it's a step in the right direction, um, because it's our business to fix potholes and look out for the safety of this town. I mean, among other things, make sure that the parks work right, and, you know, the traffic flows and all of that stuff. But, you know, what's going on here is different than that. I mean, so the title somehow, I understand what you're trying to do, Barry. You're trying to bring it in to a topic that is germane to our...
We do.
To what we do. Um, we are, however, I mean, one might question some of the other whereas's of being resolved. I mean, I understand where you, you know, I do understand where you're trying to get, Barry. And I'm guessing that there's been several iterations, and you and Dan have worked on. And philosophically, I mean, I just wanna say this for the benefit of you guys. Um, you guys are all active workers, and, you know, I'm probably the only guy in the room that has a withdrawal card from the United Steel Workers Union. Um, and I grew up with the shop steward that had four hundred guys in the steel mill that, uh, came looking for advice to him. So you gotta understand where I'm coming from.
John, so the title.
So this is germane, because the title is the title, okay? However, when you look at the body of this thing, the title is, uh, you know, this amendment I'm actually in favor of.
Okay.
Okay? But I think that it is only a step. I think we gotta be really careful about where we stray.
Okay, are you okay with the title? As Barry, Barry?
I'm okay with the amendment, yeah.
Okay. So, um, any further discussion on the amendment for the title? All in favor? Okay, so amended. Uh, now I'll open up discussion on the rest of the document. Vanessa, I think you had asked.
Thank you. Uh, so after our Town Council had sent out that email to us sometime last week, I think it was, um, I took the liberty of gaining a little bit more information. As far as the concern regarding whether or not we have the authority to do something like this, Cambridge has actually passed, um, a resolution, and they cited Massachusetts' General Law 164, Section 75, which states municipal authorities, quote, "may regulate, restrict, and control all acts and doings of a corporation which may in any manner affect the health, safety, convenience, or property of the inhabitants of their towns", end quote. Um, so there, I believe, were upward of eighteen towns and cities that have passed moratoriums, and many are already having a second meeting, similar to ours here. Um, so as far as the resolution as it stands now, um, I would actually recommend, um, changing it to incorporate some of the language that some of the other cities and towns have incorporated. Um, and Drakett is actually taking an interesting approach, which is, um, they have, um, asked, they have said that they will stop future permits and future work from being done. However, they have invested their town administrator with the authority on one-off situations to approve work. Uh, for example, if there's a major development where gas lines are about to go in, in this case, our town manager would have the opportunity to override the moratorium on one-off requests. So that, to me, is a middle ground between a flat denial of permits for future gas work, um, and this, which frankly doesn't do anything to encourage collaboration of National Grid.
Okay. Um, I'm afraid I need a two-minute break. I apologize to break in the middle of this discussion. Um, I think Vanessa, I wasn't aware of, um, that law, and, um, so in the meantime, I'll be right back, and we can all think on that, and how that may influence what we wanna do. Anybody else?
Cambridge, in passing their resolution, cited Massachusetts' General Law 164, Section 75, which states municipal authorities, quote, "may regulate, restrict, and control all acts and doings of a corporation which may in any manner affect the health, safety, convenience, or property of the inhabitants of their towns", end quote. So, uh, and the reason I read this is that, um, in regards to Town Council's concerns about, um, a resolution or moratorium being to defend, we have authority under state law, um, to in fact do just this. And to date, at least eighteen other cities and towns have passed, if not a moratorium, by, by name, a resolution with the same intent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Vanessa, they define what they mean by local authorities. They talking about legislative local authority, an executive local authority?
Municipal authorities.
Is that defined somewhere in the statute?
Not to my knowledge.
So then there are powers that we don't have, that Town Meeting has?
Yeah. City councils would have powers.
City councils have powers we don't have.
That's true.
Yeah. So I don't know if that extends to Select Boards. But that's a question really for Ray, yeah.
Following that, John, is there a, I mean, I wish Ray was here, really frankly, but, um, it strikes me that, I mean, do we, what authority do we have over permits? None that I'm aware of in the five years that I've been a Select Board.
Don't spell out.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, our authority over permits is very limited. I mean, we work with liquor licenses, we work with, you know, a lot of things, but I never recall a permit request in front of us.
Vanessa?
Uh, I mean, I think this speaks to the broader safety that we are expected to bring to residents. And we've seen in the packet, they provide numerous examples. Um, so in my mind, this, we have two choices, which is to do nothing, um, or, uh, to look out for the best interests and the safety of the town during these types of projects, um, by passing a resolution stopping this kind of work. Um, you know, I know that, um, locally, that these, um, the employees that are currently on lockout have filed thirty complaints, um, in fifteen towns in the past nine weeks. And that, to me, is concerning that there's work going on, um, about inadequate safety measures being taken with gas line work. So I, as, as someone who feels responsible for the safety of the town and the work being done here, it seems, frankly, a little negligent for us not to do anything.
Um, yeah, I'd, I'd like to comment. I think, um, we're all concerned about the safety issue, and that was paramount. And, and Dan and I discussed this, that was the main topic, and, uh, the title was misleading. Thank you for picking that up, Barry. I, I think the question that I see before us is, we, we have advice from Town Council that it would be hard to defend, uh, a moratorium or, or, or a requirement that we place on, uh, permits. The, unfortunately, this is, what we have here, we're trying to exert maybe what you might call moral authority, but it has no legal implications. So, I think we, we need to decide as a board what measures we, we wanna take, and what risk, what kind of risk we would be taking, um, if we put restrictions on the permit or put some sort of moratorium. Um, and, to me, I think that risk would be, it could be challenged by National Grid, and then we would have to retract it.
Would you like to offer that as an amendment? Do you have an alternate, uh, motion prepared?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion, is it a motion?
Yeah, so you're amending.
Motion to amend the, calling it a resolution. Motion to amend the, calling it a resolution, to include the language, be it resolved, the town of Reading.
Vanessa, whereabouts? Where are you talking?
It's the one that's...
No, where in the document?
You have to guess.
Which would it be if there's four resolves you want to add?
Which paragraph? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? There's seven.
So I would move that we remove the third, be it resolved, that the Reading Select Board strongly urges National Grid to disclose in writing to affected property owners, et cetera.
Oh, okay.
And replace that with...
No, it's the one of others.
Oh, okay, got it, got it.
Strike that. Yeah?
That the town of Reading provide heightened scrutiny, safety inspections, and monitoring on all National Grid work being done during the lockout of National Grid's contract workers, and that no new permits for gas construction projects shall be issued by this select board. As I mentioned, Drakett does have come from an additional language granting their town administrator additional authority. We could add something to that effect as well.
I'm sorry, could you read it again? The town of Reading?
Here.
Oh, yeah, even better. Thank you.
Sure. This last one.
This one provides...
Bill, I'm sorry, I have to keep my promise of no public comment. So Vanessa, I will point out, I'm favorably inclined to your amendment, except that as far as Reading providing heightened scrutiny, safety inspections, et cetera. I did ask that about Bob, we did ask that of Bob, and unfortunately, Bob can't listen because he's typing.
No, I'm listening.
But, but he was pretty clear that we do not have that kind of expertise.
Okay.
So...
Friendly amendment?
I would make a friendly amendment if people were allowed, or we can have discussion...
What's needed to be brought as an amendment?
That's what I found. Do you have any typing words about this now?
Yes, thank you.
Friendly amendment's usually for, like, innocuous changes. This is a substantive change.
This is a substantive, yes.
This is a point of order.
Now, in the example you've provided, for instance, it's Melrose.
Yeah.
No new...
Permit.
No new projects, no new permits for these will be issued by the Board of Alderman, which obviously you don't do.
Yes, no, it would be, it would be...
By the town of Reading.
By the town of Reading, yeah.
You'll need to go second on that.
Yeah.
If you get to proceed.
Good?
Got it.
Okay. Second? I'll second it. Discussion?
I mean, you know, back to the point you just brought up.
Yeah.
Is, do we even have the capacity to do this? You know, I mean, we have, wow, how many gas inspectors do we have?
It's not the capacity, we don't have the expertise.
Yeah.
I'll certainly consider removing the heightened scrutiny and safety inspections and monitoring, simply say, the town of Reading will provide no new permits for, so remove the whole scrutiny section.
Yeah. No new permits for...
Showground, no new permits.
Gas construction projects. Yeah. For gas construction, no new permits for gas construction projects.
Take out that, oh, sentence.
Period.
Take out that, shall be issued project. Yep. There you go.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that right?
And remove the and after.
That goes to the next paragraph, though.
Oh, I understand correctly.
So I'll second the amendment to the amendment, and any discussion on the amendment to the amendment?
Yes.
John?
So, by what authority, I mean, we're moving from resolution to, you know, withholding of permits, and I want to know by what authority the Board of Selectmen can do that. I don't, I mean, I thought...
John, so we're discussing right now, we'll get to that.
I'm just talking about the amendment.
No, the amendment to...
No, he's on, he's on point.
So, oh, okay, I thought we were talking about the amendment to the amendment, which was to strike the expertise bit.
With all due respect, I am on, I am on task.
That was a friendly amendment.
Oh, that was a friendly amendment.
You're done with that. Just a point of order. Now we got it out of the way.
All right, all right, it seemed substantial to me, so I...
The chairman's trying to be very precise, to which I agree.
Okay, so, so we, is there any objections to that amendment, removing that language?
No, you and she had a great...
Hearing none. John, so discussion on...
I object to removing the language, but, you know, I'm one person.
Removing, I'm sorry, you object to removing the language?
You know, we've got to follow the bouncing ball. Am I objecting to the removal?
John, John, are you objecting to the removal of the language regarding the expertise that we cannot provide?
I think he wants to kind of talk about the whole notion of...
Right. I'm just trying to make...
Just proceed with your vote. I'll, you know, I'll be quiet.
I'm not asking you to be quiet, John, I'm simply...
Well, you are in a de facto way, but that's beside the point.
John, that's out of order, all right? Let's stop this. So, let's discuss the amendment as it reads. Any comments, please?
I think that's what you wanted to talk about.
Okay, John?
Yes. By what authority are we doing this? How do we act, how can we do what that says? By what authority invested in this board can we do that?
That is the amendment.
Yeah, that is the amendment, and Vanessa gave an example of state law. I think we, we...
But that was unclear about whether or not that, it's a municipal authority. Most of the municipalities that dealt with that were cities, whereas the Alderman or the city council that issues the permits, we are removed from that. So then the question is, does that mass general law pertain to a town? And so that's the part that we may not have the authority to do so. But I, kind of, bringing it back around, I mean, wasn't Ray's whole point when you guys were kind of working on this is that, that we wouldn't, his opinion was that we didn't have the legal authority to do so, but, you know...
It was questionable at best.
Question, no, okay, yeah.
And we didn't have the authority to ban some permits at all. So the street opening permits, site plan approvals, well, that's CPDC, building permits, plumbing permits, not our, not our sphere.
Yeah.
The only thing we really operate or have dominion over is grants of location, that's when pulling gas permits are issued.
Vanessa.
So, is the main concern the authority proportion? So if we could, if Ray could confirm whether or not we did in fact have the authority, still legitimate question, if it is the case that we do have the authority to pass this and prevent the granting of permits for this type of work? In that scenario, would there be objections to the resolution as it stands now?
I think he answered the question.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, sure.
And I don't know if anyone has an answer for this, but how would you define a gas construction project? What does that mean? Does that mean any work on natural gas pipelines in the town? Or does it mean, a project, to me, implies a big thing.
I see.
And what is it?
Non-emergency work.
So any non-emergency?
So it could be someone wanted to hook up, put gas to their house.
That's my question, is what is the...
Versus Lincoln Street.
Put gas lines under Main Street in preparation for paving.
Yeah. All non-emergency work is what all of the other cities and towns have been emphasizing.
So here's, here's what I'm thinking. We, as John mentioned, we need, we have some outstanding executive minutes that we need to approve soon. That responsibility falls, I know this is slightly off topic, but I'll bring it around. That needs to be done soon. That's, open meeting law clearly points the finger at the chair to get that out in a timely fashion, those minutes. So, would it be possible for us to have a meeting before September 11th where we only discuss two things? We go into an executive session to approve the minutes for that meeting, and we have Ray research this further, and then decide it with a little more confidence at that time?
Is there any, to do this thing, this, this resolution in executive session?
No, 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 no. The exec, the executive meeting minutes, they need, they need to be approved and sent out, or the state will, will...
You only have one option if you're sticking to Tuesday, because the fourth is the primary. Can't meet that day legally. It'd have to be a week from tonight.
Right. If you want to put all this off to the 11th, that's, that's fine, I mean, I...
How full is the 11th?
Up to handy.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to depend on some of our goals, so what's...
Because I think we're going to have a couple deferred items, we're getting pretty late for the last three here.
Yeah, just FYI, I got to take a kid to school for a crack.
I hear, I hear. Is the board willing, I can meet next Tuesday, is, but I don't want to do this unless the entire board can do it.
I'm not going to be around.
Okay, then.
Can you call in?
I don't know where I'm going to be, somewhere between North Carolina...
Yeah, it's the executive session you're talking about, it's pretty important, it has to happen Tuesday.
I think we can probably wait till the 11th.
Okay.
But duly noted that you're...
Is that the feeling of the board that we...
Do you want to make a motion to table this?
Can I make my question?
Yeah.
If we ask Ray to do additional research on this, he comes back saying, yes, you do have the authority under the state regulation that I listed or another, are there any other concerns or changes that anyone would want to make to the resolution as it stands now? And I ask this because we should probably figure that out in case there's other questions we want, Ray, to look into.
I would have known.
Barry?
It's good that we do that.
Yeah, it is. I know, I mean, the whole... I want to know if I have the authority to do this.
Yeah, since you've raised some valid points, we really need to explore this, I think.
I tend to agree. John?
I only have one question, beyond the one that I've been asking all along about the authority that Barry's just reiterating.
Right.
We're talking about, have we invited at any time National Grid to come and convince us that they're operating a safe enterprise in the town of Reading? I mean, I hear what the guys are saying, and I'm not questioning their, I'm not questioning you guys, okay? Get it, you know?
You kind of...
Uh, no, I'm not, really.
We're here, they won't, they won't show up to any meetings.
Not one.
Has anyone asked?
I believe you're probably right, but have we invited them?
No.
We have gotten information from them through Bob.
Haven't you spoken with them yet?
I've never invited them to come with me.
You told me you were inviting them to the last meeting.
No.
Not, not, well, they didn't...
Okay, we got to, we got to bring it in here, guys. I hear four members of the board, please, wanting to postpone this till September 11th.
It sounds like someone should make a motion to table, so we can pick it up right at the point of that amendment.
Motion to table.
Second?
That's not available.
Okay.
Not applicable.
All right, so we will table this to the 11th, all right?
Well, we have to vote on it. Yeah, it's a question.
I'll vote.
Okay, all in favor of tabling this till the 7th?
11th.
11th, ah, okay, great.
Okay, now I think we're going back to item B and C.
So now we're, now we're back to, can you, Bob, can you preview?
I just want to make sure to save that last document.
Yep.
Just keep going.
Yeah, talk. I'll catch up. You want me to wait?
So what's, what's, what, he said keep talking, but we're not going to make any important decisions when he's here. We just got to remind me what page this is on the packet.
I'll bring it up behind us.
It's 5B, item 5B, where it is.
5B?
Yeah, in the lower right corner. I happen to have it right here, 31, page 31 in the PDF.
Doing the town...
Oh, page 31 in the PDF, got it, thanks.
Okay, I'll go over those ten articles in the draft form. One of you has already covered it, I think it was you, Andy.
Yep.
The, you know, where the Chair of the Biolog Committee has resigned, he is unable to convene a meeting in the Biolog Committee all summer. We don't know when they will next meet, so just to be clear, any actions they may have taken at November Town Meeting cannot happen, they will be scheduled in April.
They have, they're trying to schedule a meeting...
I think for next week.
In next week, so...
Wait a minute, when they have, you say they missed the opportunity?
Long since missed the deadline, I gave the town council to review anything that they've done.
That's why there's nothing controversial on there.
Right.
I noticed that.
So, I don't think I need to go over the reports, you can see what I believe will happen. Instructional motions, we never know. Capitally, there will be discussions, schools and facilities, especially in myself and DPW have a lot of discussions.
Okay.
There will be budget amendments, not significant ones. I don't know of any prior year's bills, but it's always a good idea to believe that as a placeholder. We will have surplus, again, it's not a big thing. I've asked the town accountant, she supplied some prior debt authorizations that we don't need anymore, so it's a good house.
What page is that on the PDF?
31, 31.
We'll rescind some prior debt authorizations, we'll ask for a new debt authorization for sewer inflow infiltration. As you have an agenda item tonight to follow, to finish this, the sale of property sold as a tax title, Reading and Wakefield, is ultimately a town meeting decision. And the last one is a placeholder, I'll flesh that out, our conservation agent had a discussion, the owner of some interesting property in Timberneck Swamp.
Is that a gunshot fan?
It could be. And I have not had a chance to talk to the fellow, but Chuck had a really nice conversation.
A legend, gunshot.
And he's a very willing seller, he'll just leave it at that, so that would be ultimately a town meeting decision.
Timmerneck Swamp is, is that the swamp I bought? No.
Charles.
Charles, Timmerneck.
Right, yeah.
It's that landlot.
It's one piece of land that's not...
Ten acres of conservation.
Or the Reading Open Land Trust. This would fill that.
Okay, good.
And that's it, it's a pretty simple one.
That's a change, because several years ago, they were not interested at all in selling it.
Yep. So that's it.
Okay, so I'll open discussions as Vanessa comes back on the page 31 that I cannot find out. Would anyone like to make a motion? Do we make a motion?
No, no need.
That's just a preview.
No need, it's just a...
Not yet, we're not, we're not closing any more for some time.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Bob.
Yep.
C, no, I'm sorry, I apologize, yes, C, C, authorize sale.
Okay, there's a motion in your packet, I wanted to remind you of some pictures, the board has seen this previously. This was the jointly owned Reading-Wakefield property. I asked DPW to give it a little bit of a trim, and they didn't turn it into a moratorium. That's interesting, they turned it into this. Wow, so this is what the property actually looks like, you can barely tell it was a house there before.
The front door's in Reading, the back door's in Wakefield.
Most of it's in Wakefield.
Most of it's in Wakefield. We own from the street to about here, and then straight across, so you can't get to the house except through Reading. It's crazy. The town administrator and I, a year or two ago, talked about this, that we both added a tax title, what's the point? Let's try to sell it. So they've gone through a bid process, the Wakefield and the Reading processes are different, so in Reading, the final two steps are for the board to approve it, and then the town meeting to approve it.
Uh-huh.
You didn't approve the terms that you're going to read in the motion specifically, because there were none. You approved the concept, you liked the idea. Wakefield went through a different process, so we kind of learned along the way. We did it on square footage in terms of the purchase price, not going to be a lot of money, but it's really just, let's put a productive piece of property back into use.
Yep.
Is that something, should be a motion.
Do you continue to have a joint ownership of this thing?
No. Well, yes, we will continue to own the land as we do. We will own the front. It'll have an assessed value. It's a small number. They will own the back. It's a bigger assessed value. That won't change.
Is that even practical, Bob, or is-
No, of course it's not. But to change the boundaries requires like, I don't know, constitutional convention or something.
Well, you got to, you-
That's why I just wondered if we could sell our tax interest in Wakefield.
You'd have to survey it.
It's way too large for a dollar.
No, we can't. And interestingly, even though the house is in Wakefield, its mailing address isn't Reading, because we have the street. So-
Like 65 walls.
So, you know, it would have been nice to draw the roads where the boundaries were, but that's not how things work.
Then I'm confused. We're not selling the property, but-
We hope to, yes.
We hope to.
Yes.
Because if they're both in tax title, it'll-
Well, it says that there's a buyer.
There is a buyer. We've entered an RMP legally. Wakefield has done all their legal work. We have these two last steps.
And we're waiting until the end of November.
That was a condition of the sale, proposed to the buyer and accepted. It's continued.
Because they probably have to wait two weeks after there's a possibility of overturning the vote by referendum.
They got a lot of free landscaping out of the town.
Vanessa, can you read this?
I will read it.
If we can put it up, I'll move for it to dispense at some point.
Yes.
Go ahead.
It's in your packet. Can you tell me the page?
It's page 33. Got it, Vanessa?
Yeah, that's what I have here.
Okay, go ahead and then-
Sorry, I have to read, okay, there you go. I moved at the select board vote to approve-
Backing up the desk.
Sorry?
I'm sorry.
Moved, select board vote to approve the sale of the property located on Brook Street, shown as Lot 122 on Assessor's Map 8, and described in a deed reported with the Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds.
Move to dispense with the further reading of the motion, given that it's in front of all five of us.
I'll second.
Thank you for sparing me.
Thank you.
You owe me.
Everybody feel in favor of dispensing?
Yeah.
Okay. So, any discussion?
I mean, the only, the only question I had, and hopefully, I'm assuming that the Brook Street neighbors are probably just thrilled to just have somebody buy this.
I haven't asked, but I can't remember.
Sure.
And behind you now, or behind me now, is the agreement that Wakefield and Reading struck, if you will. A lot of share on the proceeds.
Yeah, they're going to knock it down and build something. Whatever, it's good.
Yeah, exactly.
So, any more, any further discussion?
Nope.
All right. All in favor?
Okay.
That business is done.
Once you close the warrant, that'll go to town meeting.
Okay. So I really, it's 10:10. I understand that, I understand you got to take a kid to college, but I would like to spend maybe 10 minutes on select board goals. I'd really like to nail down one or two that we can start working on, on, you know, obviously on behalf of the town. And so far, these are the, these are the goals as I have them. I sent, as I promised, I sent these to John, so he has them as well. I have a few other ideas if we want to consider them. But I would encourage the board to pick, pick one or two of these so we can have-
Where are we?
I didn't see any material.
G, select board goals.
Do you have a page?
I don't have a page, though.
You don't have a page.
So was this, was this in there?
There's no material on there.
So, so I will read what I sent John, which was a summary of the ideas we threw up on the, on the board. One was finish updating our policies.
Yep.
So far, I have it that Vanessa and Barry are working on the communication piece.
Yeah, we're working on two.
And Dan and I are going to be working on-
All of two.
All of two. The other, the other one was considering reconstituting the Economic Development Committee, except in a, in a, under a different name, and a revised mission that reflects a focus on downtown. Also, Barry proposed some team, some sort of team building exercise to get the board to work better together. And the other one was review the master plan. So, all right. Are we all in favor of at least the goal of finishing updating our policies?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so all, all in favor of that goal? That will be goal number one.
We have a sense of it, of course.
And are we limiting it to just the ones that you are all working on now?
No, 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 no.
I had a few others that I talked about.
Yeah, because we've talked about this now for a couple of years, getting these things fixed.
All right. So we, Dan and I, and we are dedicated to revising Section 2 as soon as possible. Read, let's hear the, Barry, you have some ideas, some more ideas, and John, you might have some.
I just, I just had some.
Let's get the other ideas down.
The team building exercise, I think is something that we should move forward. There's a couple in here that, two or three that I think we may have talked about before. I really want, I think we should really move forward on constituting the housing trust. And sort of moving away from sort of that joint Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, Select Board Housing Authority on how we disperse it. But we had talked about that, actually, even in the meeting publicly when the housing authority was here. And this was actually in the housing production plan. And it was actually, it was recommended there about really just sort of formulating a housing trust. So we'd have a group, a separate group that we appoint that's responsible for sort of creating the fund for affordable housing and really being responsible for thinking about that. And that would include things like making sure the restrictions that we have on the existing houses stay in place. And that, you know, we sort of entail that to a separate board, the housing trust. So from what I understand, that's been recommended before. We could possibly even get that in November Town meeting, maybe?
No.
April.
It's got to be Neat Eye on the Fourth of Joy.
Right. So, so the housing, you know, creating the housing trust, which is something that has been in our recommendations for a while.
Okay, okay, spring, go ahead.
All right. I think we have to finally come up, start thinking about a disposition of Open Road.
Yeah.
I just, it's, you know, it's in our, we've had it now. It's been sent back to us.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm not saying I have the answer. I'm saying just come up with the-
The answer.
To come up with the answer.
I agree with that. I mean, there's, there's an answer. I'm not sure what it is yet, but, you know, getting to something on that instead of languishing is probably a good idea. I agree with that.
And, you know, come up with the process.
I feel strongly about that, too.
Another one is, and this is in support of a work that's all, a lot of work that's been going on for now, for a couple of years with many, many organizations in town, which is looking toward to create a cultural district in Reading. And, you know, there's some, there's groups that are coming together. They have some thoughts. But I think that really kind of coalesces with our economic development initiatives in that, you know, creating a cultural district within that downtown, really, I think, just sort of puts a spearhead to, to a lot of things that we're doing. And it's not like we're, it's not like we're starting from scratch. There's a lot of good work being done. I want to, I want to pay homage to those folks and have us sort of take that on and work with them a little more carefully and figure out what that-
Don't they kind of have a name already?
It's Arts Reading.
Yeah.
But I think one of their initiatives, and I know they're doing something in the fall to kind of kick off, is to create a cultural district that has boundaries. And then, you know, and that could be a separate nonprofit that comes off of that. They could do some fundraising. They could do, you know, look at buying a building for doing some performing art. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that can come out of it, and it's going that way. It hasn't really percolated to our level yet, I don't think, other than just sort of acting liaison into it. You know, Matt's working on it, but-
Andy, if I might-
Yes, please.
I believe it's in October. Matt's coming in to give you a preview of the following event, which you've mentioned, which is a week or two after he comes into season. So you can, I'll let him know about this.
But I think that that's something to kind of, you know, percolate to the top.
Okay. Thanks, Barry. Is that it?
There's more, but, you know.
You make too many of these things, then. I understand. We'll have choices. I think John, it is here.
What I wanted to comment on, you know, first of all, I think we got to manage the number.
Yes.
Because, and I think they ought to be something that we can realistically make either progress or completion on by the time that we kind of, you know, run through our next year, which is, you know, for all intents and purposes, it's election to election.
I agree with this. Sort of a brainstorming phase where we don't want to down select yet, and then we should move, call this list down.
I happen to think that each one of those things that you brought up, Barry, are worthwhile. Are worthwhile, you know, practical, and actually likely attainable in the window of time that we have. You know, obviously, the other one that we've talked about here with the policies, we got to get that.
Right, absolutely.
We've been dragging our feet really for a long time. Not this board for a long time, but other boards in the past.
We have made some progress.
There's been progress each year, but, yeah.
It's time to nail that off.
It's not rocket science. We can fix it.
Yep.
You know. So, but now what you start to talk about is, I think, a handful.
I totally agree.
That's it. And I happen to really think that those ones that Barry brought up are a nice match to the policy, so.
So I, you know, to reiterate what Dan said, the idea, the idea here is to cast a broad net and then narrow it down. We, obviously, we can't overwhelm ourselves with the goals. John, did you have any goals?
I, you know, I mean, I have some longer term interests that we couldn't get done in a year that I, that I think we should start to think about. I do think we need to begin thinking about the utilization of our recreation space, you know, and what is possible. Because I'm hearing, you know, I'm hearing rumblings that the child population may be growing again. We're kind of really using our space.
Yeah.
You know, I know the Birch Meadow Plan, I think, is reconstituted. I'm glad it needs to. We need to think about the things that can help us expand recreation.
Yep.
So I'm very interested in a hard look at, not the Recreation Committee, but a hard look at the recreation space and what could we do. I mean, you know, we've got a few places floating around here. I mean, out behind the ice arena is a place that, there's a baseball field that's heavily used, but the opportunity for-
Soccer field.
Yes, but it's, but it's used as a soccer field in the fall. It's used as a baseball field, you know, in the spring and the summer. I think that there's actually adequate space out there to be thinking about something all Reading residents can use, from biking and biking trails to a lot of other things. So my point is-
Potential public-private partnership there, or buying some-
So my one goal that I would like us to start looking at, although probably can't complete-
Would be a longer-
Look at the recreational space.
Got it.
And try to think about what alternative we have.
I think that's good. Vanessa?
So John, you actually bring up an interesting point, because I think you're absolutely right. We really have a year to get some of these things done. And I think there are certain items on that list, like the policy, that can certainly be done in that time. But your point about our recreational facilities or fields brings up an excellent point that we do have other initiatives that are multi-year in nature, just because of their scope. So I would suggest, as we talk about our goals that we have, I agree in limiting them to a handful, because that's the only thing that's manageable. But having short-term attainable goals or things that we can make significant progress on, as John said, as well as having some longer term goals. Recreation could be one of them, added to the list for brainstorming. I would add collaborating with RMLD. They've been very proactive in improving their efficiencies and streamlining a lot of their work. I would be very interested in having them partner with us to see what we can learn from them, what they're thinking. The electric vehicle charging stations is just one idea, but they may have others where the town could benefit as a whole. But that would be a much longer term project.
Right, right.
Something like that, aren't we, kind of, aren't they, I mean, it's in our best interest that we help them, you know, get different verticals, right? Because we get a big benefit from them every year. But wasn't there already kind of some discussion with their study? Aren't they doing a study?
Well, they're doing a financial study, yes, on their overall revenue and expenses. But if that's separate from what their future goals are to build revenue, there's, it's more of a-
Are they talking about taking on other verticals, or?
They are.
They're talking about internet service. We've been talking about them having internet service. I don't know what she is.
I don't, yeah, I mean, that's something that has been mentioned, Dan. I don't know if that's necessarily on the horizon at the moment. I mean, that's a long-term project.
Definitely pros and cons. You can argue either way there for them.
But they may have other ideas that we're not aware of, so.
I see that in terms of economic development.
Agreed.
Okay. So we have nine, 10, 11, 12. I'll just tick them off really quick. And if we could pick three tonight, is that reasonable? Because we're running late. Yes, Bob?
I have a goal for you.
Oh, you're not allowed to say this.
This is nice. There has to be a community discussion of some longer term building projects, and who are part of that discussion community. Elementary school space is one. DPW garage is another. Community center's another. So there has to be some sense at a financial forum of a discussion to agree to some set of priorities and timeframe.
Doesn't that get into the purview of the Permanent Building Committee, slightly?
It does. And it's, it's a community conversation. Those three projects are not funded within the current capital plan. And there are others that are not funded. And I'm just saying the board has absolutely strong interest in many of these issues.
All right.
And some of those, for example, could, the shorter term goal-
Yeah, like Oakland Road, for example.
Might play, could possibly play right into that, so.
And I don't mean you should be stepping on the school committee's toes. It's just a community discussion.
Well, that's where the financial forums are usually for, right, to kind of-
Everybody's together.
Right. I agree. I agree, Bob. Okay, so that gives us the happy number of 13. I'll just tick them off. And if we can, if three rise to the top, we're not forgetting about the rest of them, but we can start working. And if we could come up with a deadline, I work better with the deadline. I don't know about you, all of you.
Andy, before we go into, are we planning on talking about the stakeholders meeting on-
Yes, that's what I'm trying to-
As well as the Select Board Policy and Communication? Or are we postponing that?
I don't know if you're going to talk to the Communication Department.
I'm sorry. I was going to say, can we, would the board be amenable to tabling, identifying the goals until our next-
That's, that's fine.
Meeting and then moving on to the-
I would prefer to say, go away on the last three tonight.
You would send me the list you have.
I would.
And prepare it for future.
We're actually, you know, since you can communicate with all of us, you can send it to us, and then we can kind of put-
Yeah, do that.
Priorities in there. And at least now, we'll have everybody's aggregation.
Yeah, I will.
That's what I was saying to Bob.
Yeah, okay, good. Just to be clear, I will do that. Everyone in agreement? I wanted to get people's quick input. Next, on September 11th, we're going to have a stakeholders meeting on the anti-Semitic vandalism that we made a statement about and taking some action on. I expect HREC to take the lead on that.
Will that be in our meeting?
That will be part of our meeting. And, and my, my thought was to hear from key parts of the community to get some ideas for actions that we can take. I know HREC is already starting to work on this, but I wanted to open it up to a wider community discussion. Any thoughts on that?
Is this just HREC? Is Red involved?
I invited Red. I asked the police chief. He was very enthusiastic about coming, of course. That's, that is, it depends on-
How about our brother and sister on the school committee?
Yes.
It's happening on the properties.
Yes, I have.
Have we invited the school committee?
Yeah. I've talked, I've sent out an invitation. I haven't heard back. But I, it'd be great if we could get them. We can't force people to come. But are there, so those are the groups that I've reached out to. Any other groups that you can think of?
The clergy.
Yeah, the clergy. Association, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So Andy, can I just add, so, so the 11th, the agenda title is called-
So, Andy, can I just ask, so, so the eleventh, the agenda title is called Stakeholders Meeting on Anti...
Right.
So is it, is it, and we're, we're hosting it?
We're not running it. We're hosting it.
Well, yeah, we're hosting it, but we are running it. I mean, it's already part of our meeting, but we want it...
So is it kind of, I mean, do you sort of have a vision for sort of what you, what you want to come out of it at the end? Is it, I guess, the last thing in the world I'd want to see is, you know, the town should have done this, or the town should have done that.
It's not looking in hindsight.
Okay. So, I mean, is there a structure in your mind yet about kind of, I mean, you said H-Rac is going to kind of run it a little bit? I mean, is it just more of a, what are some ideas that we can do? What are some, I mean, help me think about...
The, the concept would be that each of these groups present their ideas for us to consider. And then I think the appropriate thing to do is when we consider the ideas and which ones we would like to implement, that H-Rac, not to shove overwork on them, but they are technically...
They're the only ones we appoint at Red of all those people.
Right. Exactly. We can't tell Red what to do. We can't tell them Redding. But I want to hear their ideas in some sort of, you know, some brief presentations. And also the police chief's. He was actually excited to have a conversation with these groups because, you know, the police have limitations, too, in this area, and he thought it would be a good opportunity for a conversation. So are there any other groups that you guys can think of, I'm sorry, you folks can think of, that we should invite to this?
I would, it would ultimately be up to the school committee, but I think the principal, principals of the high school and middle school, if the school committee would like to extend that invitation, you know, I think they would be, school resource officer, get all this under the purview of the school committee generally. Anyone else that they might consider as appropriate people on the ground at schools?
You said the principal or superintendent?
The principals of the middle schools and high school, as well as the school resource officer.
Did they know about, have you...
I, I've, I've let them know, and I will remind. I will reach out on that. And then, again, my hope is to have some brief presentations by all of them, ideas, so that we can take some sort of action through it.
I think they may, they may be soliciting ideas from us, too.
Sure.
I don't...
I hope, we, we have some ideas, too, you know?
I think it would be nice if it was an open conversation, not necessarily structured, none of this room makes that hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, we're back here.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, do you want to have a free flowing discussion on this, or do you want to have it organized into presentations and then...
What's the expectations of the folks you've already talked? I mean, what are they expecting to come out of this?
They are expecting, I've asked for their input on ideas, on actions that we can take.
Then it's got to be just a free flow of like, you know, it's just got to be, let it flow, let it ride.
You can set that expectation.
Okay. All right.
I mean, some of it may be, you know, ready to write.
I'm ready.
All right. I think that'll be good.
Just, if I might?
Yes.
I've talked to the superintendent and the police chief. The three of us are happy to come. I've not asked about the school committee or other employees. I will, I'll see them tomorrow, the next day, I forget. Okay. When you say actions we can take, I think it's really important that you understand you are the select board, you are not the school committee.
That's right.
And the meeting is very different with and without them.
Absolutely.
I'll encourage us...
They're very, very important stakeholders.
Just remember it, I'm at a school committee meeting tomorrow at seven a.m. I'll pass this request along.
I, thank you.
The meeting at seven in the morning?
Executive session.
I'm very aware of the, of the boundaries. So, in one way, I was reluctant to ask them to come because I didn't want to appear like we're, but I think it's good that they be part of the conversation.
They're a big piece of skin in the game.
They really do. They really do. Okay.
Just have minutes left. I think we're going to defer one-four.
How long is your one-four?
We don't have any material on it, so it's really, what can we talk about? Nothing in the packet.
Let's table it.
Yeah, we were just going to go with some ideas, but which we've talked about, it's, yeah.
Okay. All right. Would someone like to make...
Two minutes. Two-minute drill.
All right, do it.
All right.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I really would like, I'm sorry, I know you didn't need to go, Barry.
No, I just, because I think, I mean, Vanessa and I met for like an hour and a half, and we kicked around some, some really good ideas, and I just, I want to sort of honor that work and do it the right way and not just kind of just go through it when we're all just tired and...
I respect that.
I mean, unless...
Remember, we used to go to eleven.
I know, but...
Yeah, can you give us at least an outline of the material that you talked about for the packet? That'd be helpful.
Yeah. All right.
All right, agreed to table? Yes.
Yes.
Minutes?
The minutes. I have any comments on the minutes?
You got to make a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of the select board on July 31st, 2018.